I hereby call to order this special and committee of the whole meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2022. The time is 8:03 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin?
Here.
John Cesaretti?
Here.
Ann Hart?
Here.
Bonnie Kim?
Here.
Frank Panzico?
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Babes?
Yeah.
Erin Stone?
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the April 11th, 2022 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 11th, 2022 Committee of the Whole and Special Meeting.
Executive Session.
Executive Special Meeting. Executive Session Special Meeting.
May I have a second?
I second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes?
I had something. Under Old Business, if you go to A1, policy 6.60, the third paragraph down. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm.
The last sentence says, "She noted some districts adopt." It's unclear who she is.
Right.
Is it Carrie?
I don't know. I emailed you.
Okay, got it.
About that as well over the weekend.
Okay. Got it. Okay. We're good then.
Oh, yes. In the amended copy, it says Dr. Prinschel.
That's what I figured. Okay, we're good then.
Any other comments or errors? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. We will continue our agenda with the Facility Development Committee.
We have some exciting news to talk about in Facility Development today, so.
So Frank is saying.
And the intended, they have to also approve minutes and some public comments.
Okay. Well, this one, that's not in my script. We, this is our first, our opportunity for public comments. So anybody here who would like to address the board? I don't see anybody. So we will move to Facility Development.
Now you can have exciting news.
We have some exciting news to talk about today. No, we have just a lot of planning. We've been doing a lot of planning and we have our team here present. Glad to have them as well. So several topics subbies out. I'll let Cory kind of get us started.
Okay. So the first topic this morning, we just wanted to, Joe Papo Nikolas from Nikolas and Associates to share with the board how we're looking headed into our summer projects for the three projects we got going this summer.
Good morning. So Summer 2022, we have work at McKenzie, Harper, and Ramona, as we all know. The big task was mechanical equipment. It was a big topic of conversation and utilizing a pre-purchase method. So, long story short, we're in great position. I'll kind of go through each school, just touch base on a little bit of the equipment accordingly. So McKenzie, we do have a chiller. I'll get a little specific. June 17th is the ship date for the chiller at McKenzie. Univentilators are shipping end of this month. That's great. Harper, we have univentilators, boilers, air handler, cabinet unit heaters. All are in storage. The univents are shipping June 23rd. Okay? Ramona, so we have windows, aluminum framing and glazing. Those are all shipping the second week of June. So those are all extreme lead times that we've identified early and I think the team's done a great job just making sure that things are prepared early and ultimately leading to an adequate ship date for the summer critical work. So we're in good shape with regards to that. It's just a lot of submittals, a lot of preparing, establishing schedules, outlooks. So we're ready to start here like we do every summer, second week of June, once, once the kids and staff are out for the academic year. We're still under budget.
Waiting for that.
Especially in the time of, when banning, locked in bids and pre-order.
Right. So pricing is held for the duration of the construction phase, so there's not an avenue for, for any increases related to material or equipment.
While you're up there, and it's kind of skipping ahead, but just to get another view, going forward, quotes and estimates that we have, what, how big of an effect will inflation have on?
Well, any assessment that we do, and we have quite a few that we've done the last number of months here, those are based on current market conditions. So there, there are some differentials certainly from some of the previous assessments we've done in 2019, 2020, even last year. So I think it's, I think it's good practice to identify where things are coming in based on current market conditions, and I think we should continue to do that all the way up until we go out to bid, just like we did these last three and like we do every year. There are certainly some adjustments that are made during the design and, and the design process. We just, we want to identify where we're at before we go out to bid.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions for him on this part of the topic so far? Okay.
Thank you for all your work on that.
All right. So the next topic is the resolution to approve some emergency roof replacement work at Central Elementary. As I shared last month, we've gone through and at least in the short term, stop, stop the leaks from continuing to happen. I'm going to share a diagram that can show the results of the, of the scan. Okay. So when you look at this diagram, you know, we, we had the roofing company come, one of our roofing contractors come out, take care of some leaks, and they took a couple of, couple of corrings. They, the initial ones that they had taken that led to them proposing to replace roughly 11,000 square feet, they were right around this wet area three. And then, as I said before, to get an additional level of comfort and find out what's, what's truly going on in, within this section of roof, we had the roofing component of SDR come out and do a scan of, they did section two and then they did all of section three, which is, which is by far the largest section at Central. They identified three areas that have presence of water, moisture below, below the roofing surface. A little over, it's about 3,100 square feet of total area. So the areas that are highlighted in red, there's really no question that need, that absolutely needs to be replaced this summer. And then when we look at taking that a step further, you know, should we just do the, the areas in red or should we do the areas around that and do one, one whole section or a part of the section? And when we look at the age of this section three, it's 21 years old now, we're probably looking at, at best another five to seven or eight years before we'd have to replace that section. So what we're proposing is that the board authorize work to approve the replacement, full replacement of the roof in section three, starting where it meets section two and then curving, dropping down to the bottom of the screen and over where the blue line kind of divides section three. So that blue line represents a natural slope. It's like the high point of a slope in section three, and that's where, why the roofing company picked that as a stopping point. So we feel like long-term getting, this is the best, the best financial decision to go ahead and just replace the whole, this whole section now versus replacing bits and pieces and then coming back and replacing the whole thing in just a few more years. But now as far as the process to go about doing this, right? So the cost of this is more than, than the typical bidding threshold. Normally we would get this out, however, from the time that we found out about this work and the need to address this, you know, to draw bid specs, bid it out, allow for a proper bidding period, have the board approve it, then have contractor with, get enough lead time to acquire materials, roofing is, is no different than many of the other areas. There's an, there's a, an ability to have the board pass a resolution for emergency work that allows us to be exempt from the bidding process. So District Legal Counsel has provided a resolution, which is in the board packet. It gives a, if the board were to approve that resolution, we would need six yes votes out of seven board members for it to go into effect. You need at least 75% to approve it. The district would be able to proceed shortly after school gets out and duration of the project would last a couple of weeks. One thing I want to point out about the, the resolution, inside there, it does not reference a specific amount. When I talked with legal counsel, the resolution is general, in general, they're very generic because in cases where there's emergency work, it's often not known what the final amount of the, of the project's going to cost. However, there is a requirement that once you know the final cost, to publicly report that to a board, to the board at a board meeting. So we know upfront that the quote is for 227,500. So that's kind of our starting point, and that would be the, the price to replace the roughly 11,000 square feet. You know, what could change that? As they start to pull that up, below the roofing surface, there's a gypsum deck. If any of that were to be damaged by moisture, they would replace that as well. That is one of the reasons that we want to replace this whole section this summer right away. Replacing that gypsum deck can be, be really expensive, even likely to be as expensive or more expensive than doing the, doing the roofing system itself. So we would, if there were any additional cost during the roof replacement, we would report that back to the board. Given the timing of that, it would probably be at our August meeting, since this work would occur over the summer. And then I think as I put in the notes to the board, we are looking at possibly some masonry work. There's a chimney within this section that's quite tall. Looks like it needs some work, but relative to the amount of roofing work there, it's possible that we may have some masonry patching or work that we would, we would report back to the board as well as we do for this. So really what we're asking for later in this meeting is for the board to approve the resolution, which allows us to proceed with locking in, prate roofing to tackle this 11,000 square feet of work. Any questions?
I had a couple. Does anybody else have any? Going back just for a second, if we did the patching, the roof is still 21 years old, so it still means it would have to be replaced in three or four, five years, you know? So that, that part makes sense. Do we have any forensics on why there are these leaks there? I mean, is there some like design thing that more than just replacing the roof that, that caused there to be three patches in that same area?
No. I mean, when you look at this roof, if you were to pick it up there, there are several things that, several different things that come up through the roofing system. Anytime there's a, you know, whether you're putting a small mechanical unit up there to air condition a couple of classrooms or an office space, anytime you, you know, are cutting through the roof, it's always an opportunity for a leak. I will say that when they were up there, one of our maintenance team members was up with the roofing company on a Friday a few, several weeks ago now. If you look at the wet area in section one, section one, there's a kind of an oval in the middle that says a split in the roof. That, that split in that particular section was about seven feet long, and when they stepped on it, it wasn't real hard to have moisture pop out of there. Now that was shortly, shortly after, you know, several hard rains. But, you know, it, it certainly, it was kind of a straight line, you know, cracked roof, so. Most of it's just age, you know, wearing tear over many years.
I have a couple more. Feel free.
I was just a reminder on how long will the proposed fair?
So when I asked the, they're saying, if weather's, well, days without rain is probably between six and eight, six and eight working days. So the goal would be to get prey, working right after school's let out, then whether it holds, they should be able to get this roofing done before our D39 summer programming starts on July 10th. So that, that would be the goal. I think there's enough time in there. I mean, not that we have the choice, but it, it is nice that summer programming starts in July versus right after school.
So the wet parts, they get removed? Like how does it dry out and that, like, are we going to have a move problem right after?
Well, I mean, that's one of the reasons we want to have it taken care of this summer, but between the, the top level roofing system and then below there, there's a gypsum deck, and my understanding is that is, gypsum deck is waterproof. So hopefully the water is staying between there and, and the, the top level. But if it were to keep going, I mean, that's one of the reasons we want to address such a large section, is this particular, when you look at this map, this particular section basically covers our entire learning commons area at Central. So it's a very nice area. It's something that they should put a lot of money into. If it were to go through, we would have an even bigger problem, and I would be back here again.
Yeah, I just had a question. So with respect to the area of section three that you said you weren't going to replace right now?
Yep.
Is that part of the roof also 21 years old?
Yes, it is.
So would that have to be replaced?
And probably another five, yeah.
Okay. But they decided not to go with it?
Yeah, there, well, when we look at, so like if you look at section three from the blue line wrapping over to where it runs into section five on the diagram, there was no leaks, and when they did the scan, there was no moisture over there. So we were kind of looking at it strictly from trying to do an area that made, that made sense from the roofing layout and stay within the confines of this is emergency work. And we kind of felt like going to the right of that blue line, yeah, it's old and it's probably not too far, but it's not necessarily emergency work per se.
How much roughly would it cost to replace like the whole roof in that section?
Sure. Section three?
Yeah.
So if this is 227, I mean, there's a, section three is about 16,000 square feet, and we're doing 11, so add another 100,000. I mean, based upon the price that this contractor has, has given us, so.
Yeah, I, I've forgotten. So how long is the roof supposed to last? Like another nine years or something?
Yeah, I mean, I would hope to get, I would hope to get, I mean, 25 or push it up near 30.
Yeah, another five to nine. Good condition. Yeah, so, so in five to nine years, we'll replace the whole thing? Is that how, I don't know how this all works, or do you replace?
The remaining part, so like.
Not replace?
Yeah, so like, when you look at section three, the part that's wet now, we won't, we won't have to replace. The reason we're going up to the blue line is we won't have to replace that 11,000 square feet in another five or six years. You would just replace the part to the, right to the blue line. And then any other sections that are roughly that, which is there are some.
It's not great, but that section is.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. Thank you. So two more fairly quick ones. The, I think you'd mentioned before, it's, we've used it vendor before, so you're, you're pretty comfortable with.
Yes, yeah, we've used this, when I asked our director of facilities and operations, we've used prate roofing for very long, well over a decade. Yeah, very happy with it.
The, the only, the last one, and I'm not sure, since you've already put a lot of work into the wording, normally I would like to have like a not to exceed price, and up to the point where you use the word gypsum, that I was going to recommend that we get a not to exceed price, and then said, well, that could double the price, and that makes it really hard then. So how are we, I mean, we're, we're going to be voting on something and, and the sense of the board seems to be that, that sense, but is there any way to, to cover that not to exceed desire?
I mean, from my perspective, from the quote that I, the quote that was presented to us, like if it's just, if the work is simply replacing, ripping up and, and putting down a new roof in 11,000 square feet, the price is the 227,000. Anything that would go beyond that would be like any additional damage that's below the roofing layer, and, you know, that's something we wouldn't, I think for any project, like many times you start ripping stuff open, you don't know what's there until you open it up. So I would have no intention to like, for the 11,000 square feet, I, I don't have any intention for that price to change. It would be anything extra outside of that scope of work, and then the, the masonry, any masonry work that we do.
I mean, I don't think there's another, I can't think of another option. It's always uncomfortable to vote to, you know, emergency approval of an open check. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
I should, given we don't know what they are going to go in and open it up, do we need to do any contingency planning for the July 5th start date of summer school? Are we?
No, I think, you know, where we're at now, like when they're replacing the roofing system, they were to have to replace the, some of the gypsum deck below it. When we talked with the contractor, I don't know that, it might add a little bit of extra time, but I don't know that it's adding like weeks, weeks. I, I don't foresee that to be, at least when we had our conversations with, with the contractor, that would be usual.
Any, any other questions on that one then? Thank you, Cory. Next one is the long-term facilities planning. Do you have some baseline information before we get to this section?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a, I have a presentation and I have, you know, several pieces of information, and near the end of the presentation, I'll have, well, I'll get some input from, from Joe and then also from Sandra at SDR. We'll open it up for the board's kind of comments and feedback, and I guess the one way I'm looking at this is there is a lot of information we're going to share with the board, a lot of things that we've considered, cast kind of a wide net, had many conversations, talked about many projects. I guess what we're looking for today is not to set it a, you know, kind of a definitive plan, but to certainly get some initial feedback from the board at the conclusion of our conversation, at least enough to the point where we can go back in between now and our June meeting, you know, firm up some plans and then bring a specific plan, or if the board so desires, a couple of different options that are specific plans of, this is the project we're going to do in '23, '24, '25, '26. Here's the priorities, here's kind of the parameters with which we're operating. So that's kind of the, the goal. I realize, like I said, we're, we're sharing a lot of information. Some of this information I've had for a month, some of it I've thought about for six to 12 months, so I've had a long time to get comfortable with it. The goal is to try and make everybody else a little more comfortable after we're all done, so.
Yeah, I, just along those lines, in, in the past, we've tried to like put these in the like buckets, you know, must-have things to make sure that, that we, we have the resources and those get locked in. Important and nice to have maybe three buckets, maybe four buckets, but so while we're listening to this presentation, think in your mind along those lines, because the total number here is like 30 million. So obviously, you know, not all of this is going to fit into a five-year plan. But so starting to think through while you're listening, that kind of categorization is probably a useful outcome of today's week. Okay, I'll say Cory.
Cory, before you get started, can I just remind you to pull your, it's sometimes helpful if you pull your microphone onto the side of your computer? That way we can make sure that we're capturing the area presenting. Thanks so much.
All right, so as I said for.
There we go.
Yeah. I got all of it. All right, so as I said, you know, kind of our, as I thought about this long-term plan and how it might fit into, you know, our, our five-year strategic plan, Dr. Krimskol pointed out something interesting to me. I had been thinking about this as five years from, from like after this summer, when our five-year strategic plan really would, would include this summer. We've already obviously identified and approved those three projects. So some of my focus kind of tends us to take, take as past five years to maybe six years, but that's kind of the lens. So like I said, we cast a wide net, so I'll share a little bit of background info and then we'll get into some more specific projects. All right, so our district's got six schools in the MEC building. I think one thing that you see on this slide is all of our buildings, you know, none of them are new, they've been around for a long time, and a few of them have been here a really long time, especially the original portions of them with, you know, High Crest being built in 31 and Harper being built in 41. And I think when you look at that, obviously there, each building has had additions and renovations throughout its history. So just a little bit of context that, yes, our buildings are old, which can make any kind of renovations, you know, a little bit challenging. All right. So I look back and, and think about like recent facility initiatives that the district has undertaken. Many times when a district goes through a strategic planning process, or in this case, more of a long-term facilities plan, they're doing it with the purpose of there's like a huge facilities need, or the district itself had never really put much money or resources into their facilities. I think in District 39's case, that's not, that's not really what's happened over the last decade. Over the last decade, all six learning commons have been upstated. They look great. It's a nice, nice part of each building with the last one that was completed in 2019. Then more recently in 20 and 21, we had four elementaries that had additions and renovations to support our, our afternoon keep 39 programming. During that time, we've added some large space air conditioning throughout, throughout the district, and then High Crest had additions and renovations that covered three summers. There was three phases and a lot of work was covered. Now, as the way that the district has kind of structured projects and maintained their facilities, at least the way I've always, at least I've viewed it since I've been here, is we have kind of two big, two kind of two main groups. We have school-based capital projects, which we've had that, we've had kind of a budget, you know, for each school. Those projects tend to be smaller in size, they're managed by the district, and our facilities and operations team typically would work with building leadership to select and prioritize what projects get done each summer. Then the other component would be our larger summer projects. Those things tend to take all summer long to complete, and then to be able to do those, we would require, you know, the use of architects, engineers, and then construction management firm to like manage these projects. So on the school-based capital project side, more recently, the annual budget for this has been about 600,000. And these projects tend to come last in the, in the, in the process in that we have an idea of what we want to do, but what actually gets done is contingent on what summer construction's going on in a particular building, and then what is our building use over the summer, and then what's able to be done is able to be done. And sometimes there are, many times there are things that we like to do that just aren't able to be done because of the construction or the heavy use that our buildings see in the summer. And I've put a list of, an example of different types of projects that I've either seen that have been completed here or have been completed since I've been here. It's a wide variety of things, indoors, outdoor, you know, projects inside, outside, things in the classroom, things in, in common areas, but it does span a wide, wide range of topics. But it does span a wide, wide range of topics. Now, our summer construction projects, we've tended to fund those with either a long-term debt issuance or the use of existing reserves. And those have typically focused around, you know, boiler univent, piping replacements, building automation systems, as we just talked about, roof replacements, addition and renovation projects, which the district has done in the last decade, replacing windows across the building, which we're doing this summer, adding air conditioning, which the district has done several times. And then, and sometimes included in those projects is the need to address some asbestos abatement. So thinking, kind of thinking ahead, you know, we we just completed addition of renovations. It's, as I think the board saw on that list of potential projects, there's really not much in the in the realm of like adding space, at least in this next five-year window. I mean, certainly some things could be considered renovation a little bit. And then I will move on to boilers. So as I mentioned, like one of the things for me as thinking about a five-year plan was whatever we're going to ultimately recommend or proceed with was me being able to get comfortable with what we're going to do. And a part of that was trying to understand of the large projects that, like when they come up, we don't have a choice of doing them, boilers, roofs, there are certain things like they come along, we're doing them whether we want to or not. So I wanted to get comfortable with, like, where are they at? Like, are they things that we're going to address in the next five years? Are they things that maybe hanging out in that next five-year window, maybe six to ten years? Or are they even further down the road where, you know, they're just so far, we're not even, we're going to plan for them right now? So on this particular slide, what I've done is listed the the boilers with the install dates by by building. And so one of the things that you, you know, we're addressing Harper this summer, which is something we felt was was really needed and we're grateful for that. So when I look at, then you have Highcrest Central and Mackenzie. Right now, we're over the twenty-year mark. And so when I talk with our facilities and operations team of, okay, what what is the condition of Highcrest Central and Mackenzie? And the feedback that I received was that the boiler structure itself for all three was was in good shape, which is great news, because that allows us to push each of those projects past the five-year window and, you know, start to think like, okay, we can't put delay it forever, but they're not something that we need to address in this next five-year window, probably thinking more in that six to ten, where when we end the twenty twenties or start the twenty thirties, that those three schools need to be kept in mind as far as boiler replacements. And just for reference, each school has multiple boilers. So there's there's some redundancy. If one were to, you know, have a break, something were to break down, we're able to, you know, keep schools open throughout the winter while we're fixing. And then I just wanted to point out that the MEC building here doesn't have any boilers and that there's actually no natural gas connection. So this building runs entirely on electricity right now. All right, roof replacements. So we just talked about that. So last summer, as I said, trying to get comfortable, knowing what was ahead, we had STR take a look at, and they reviewed each section of all of our buildings of roof, and then they provided me with a big spreadsheet and they included when they were installed. But the thing that was helpful to me was, you know, seeing the age of the roof, when it was installed, then getting an idea of the condition and when that expected schedule might be for replacement. And so they kind of broke it down into four buckets for each section of roof, one to five years, six to ten years, eleven to twenty, and then anything that's twenty plus. So we're immediately, this, well, step back a second, this summer, as part of the projects, we are doing a small amount of roofing at Harper. And then there is about five hundred, about four fifty or five hundred thousand dollars worth of roofing work at Mackenzie. So that that was helpful to get those those sections addressed this summer. And obviously, we'll tackle, you know, a sizable amount at Central as well. But the rest of this stuff, the more immediate roofing need was at Willamette Junior High. And so we're looking at probably about sixty to sixty-five percent of the overall roof square footage at the Junior High needing to be addressed in the next five years. Going into this process, we're probably thinking, you know, probably closer to one to three than than five. But when I talked with our facilities and operations team, the roof, while while it is older, it's in, it is holding up. We're not seeing leaks. We're not seeing issues with the stuff that is older at that particular building. But we went ahead and included it in the list because we know we want to address it. The estimated cost for that section, for the for all those sections combined is about two to five million. Then at Ramona, we have nearly all of that roof is would fall into that six to ten-year window. And we had included that in our scope of work of trying to find cost. So we have a cost of roughly one point nine million to address all of those sections. Then at Central, all the remaining sections that were from that were installed in two thousand and one that would probably be needing to address later this later this decade, they fall into that six to ten-year window. Highcrest has a few sections that fall into that six to ten-year window, probably if you're ballparking, probably looking at six hundred to thousand to maybe a million dollars worth of of work. Relative to the size of Highcrest, it's not, it's not a big part. After the work is completed this summer for Mackenzie, the next window for that for that building would be eleven to twenty years. And then Harper has a few small sections that would probably fall into that six to ten-year window. And then this building, you know, probably not for another eleven to twenty years. So let me switch over to a couple of other documents to share with, to share with the board.
While you're doing that, the one other that could call and fall in this category is the window replacement. Are you going to cover that later?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll talk about that. Okay. All right. Yeah. So I'll just go ahead and address it now. So windows, when I look at the windows, you know, as a group, you know, we're addressing the Ramona windows. You know, if you go back to that slide that had the year Ramona was built in fifty-eight, I won't guarantee this, but I think the belief is that the windows that we're replacing date back to them. Then the only other building for windows that really hasn't seen, that would need a significant amount of work is the Junior High. That's in our, it's kind of in our, in our minds for this next five years. And one of the things that when we asked the architects and engineers to look at all these projects and to identify, you know, a scope of work that would give enough information so Nicholas and associates could estimate these costs, one of the things I noted in the notes was it the high likelihood that the windows at the Junior High that need to be replaced to go back to sixty-two when the building was built. So so that's probably the one, like window replacement that would be be on our radar. All right. So shifting gears. So as you'll see, when we get to the one-page summary of projects, air conditioning plays a prevalent role in a variety of ways. So what I thought was useful, at least from my own perspective, was just have a one-page document of like, what does each building have? What do they, what do they, what don't they have? And so what you see here is each building with all the large, what we consider large space areas, whether they have air conditioning or not, they're all fairly equal, relatively speaking. Central maybe has a little more than than the others. Then when you, really, the the focus is when you go down to that bottom row, classrooms with air conditioning. Going into this summer, Mackenzie is right in line with the other three elementaries where you're right at fifty percent or maybe a little less. After the summer, every classroom in Mackenzie will have air conditioning, so they'll be at a hundred percent. And then at the at the upper grade levels, the Highcrest and the Junior High, you see a little bit of a difference between Highcrest and the Junior High. And those would have been much similar before last summer's second floor AC project, which added air conditioning to twenty classrooms at the Junior High. So this this kind of gives you a kind of a one-page summary of where we're at after the conclusion of this summer as it relates relates to air conditioning. So that takes us to our kind of our one-page summary of all the projects that we're considering. We have some cost on the side. We have some notes. What I'll do for this page is I will offer a couple of thoughts on kind of the why I asked for these projects to be included. And then I'll have Joe address some of the specifics of these projects to give everyone an idea of, you know, why the cost might be what they are. So as you look through here, obviously, you see lots of air conditioning, both large spaces on here as options. And then you see adding adding AC to the classrooms. Large space air conditioning had previously kind of been on the, like in the plans before, or at least out there as like wanting to be addressed before I arrived. But I also wanted to know, like, what would it cost to add air conditioning to each, to all the remaining classrooms within the buildings and set the buildings up to be a hundred percent air conditioned in the classrooms going forward? I have the boilers on there because at the time we asked, started the investigative process, I wanted to know, I just wanted to know what that amount was, knowing that it's likely to hit us in that six to ten-year window. So really, later this decade, I just wanted to know what was kind of lurking out there, not that it was immediate. And then to Frank's point, then the other things of like why they're on there, things that we just need to address, feel like we need to address. The roof at the Junior High, we we know we need to address. And then at Highcrest, there's univents and then a building, bringing the building automation system on to to one system. We know that those need to address due to age. And it's just, it's not, not a great system right now. The the building is controlled by three different systems, plus there are twenty-four classrooms that have controls outside of any operating system. So they're controlled by our stationary engineer independently. At least from my perspective, why that's problematic and why we're anxious to put the building on one automation system is our stationary engineer, when he's working and trying to troubleshoot stuff, it it's not efficient, it's not quick. And what in his workload, when it rains, it pours. And so if he's having to like do the same thing over and over because they're not all on one automation system, it just slows down how quickly he can get to the next problem to troubleshoot in each of our buildings. So and then the windows at the Junior High is also, so there's really three that were kind of on our radar at the building, at the school level. And then one more immediate project that I know we want to address, our preferred is to do it in the summer of twenty-three, is here at the MEC. So through this process, one of the things that we identified was, at least I became aware of, is the water piping system in this building needs to be replaced. And the reason for that is anytime we do any work, our plumber goes back into the maintenance area, actually shuts off the water to the entire building. So like, if even if it's a small project, it takes thirty minutes, instead of going to the sink, under the sink, or into the into the bathroom, or any other place, and turning off the water source there, we go back there because A, the the piping is so old, but two, the the control valves were put on upside down, however many, however many decades ago it was. Now, where that's problematic is as there's rust and sediment like flowing through the pipes, our plumber is extremely worried that if he were to turn, not only would he not be able to like get it to stop, but any turn would probably cause a leak. And if it caused a leak, we wouldn't be able to turn it off because we don't have that ability. So that's why we have that project on there. It's it's time for that. And then the the two bathrooms down the hallway here, because of replacing the pipe, all the piping, to get into the bathrooms, we would already be doing some work in the bathrooms. They were, those bathrooms were already on our radar at some point that we're a recommendation is to like just proceed forward and just renovate those bathrooms because we're already taking apart and just to have some efficiencies to go with it. So that would be something that we would do in a summer and we would pair it with another another project. So and then at the bottom, I have some general budget pricing. The reason I ask for that is I know that these things are lurking out there. They're not necessarily immediate, but from my own planning perspective, I wanted to know, just wanted to have that comfort of like, what is the cost? Should I need to address that? Go ahead, Joe.
Just some general comments like Corey mentioned earlier. These numbers are based on design criteria and some parameters that the design team, Sandra's team, established. This is the same process that we used in the past. Once, once I do get the design criteria, I do distribute it out to contractors, suppliers, just to ensure that we have most recent budgeting taken into consideration. These aren't just square foot type numbers. Besides contractor feedback, we 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 weigh heavily on just recent bidding. So window replacement project, we just bid Ramona. Why wouldn't we use that as a rough baseline for the Junior High that's coming up? So these are high level for decision-making purposes. Design has not commenced in any of these. Okay. We do have some conservative placeholders, which is where we want to be. We want to start out conservative. Once the design commences, the budget will be refined. With regards to scope of work and kind of what what makes up these numbers, window replacement work, pretty straightforward, roofing replacement work, pretty straightforward. When it comes to AC in classrooms, naturally, it's heavy mechanical. So we're talking a couple million dollars in mechanical work. The electrical to support that mechanical work ranges from six hundred thousand to a million. And then you have general trades type work, ceiling work, steel work, things of that nature, casework modifications. We feel this is, we're confident in what we've put together here based on, based on recent history in this district. And I think this is just a good starting point to just start discussing, you know, what the next five years look like. If there's any, any specific questions on any of these line items, I can certainly discuss that.
Are there any specific synergies, like a couple items on it that if we did them together, it'd be more efficient than doing separate?
Sure. We've discussed economies of scale in the past. I think, I think the biggest thing's going to be the timing of when we go out to bid. So there's a tremendous amount of work in the area. Supply chain's still a little unpredictable. I think, I think bidding workout, the early part of the year of the work that's forthcoming in the summer, I think that's too late. I think we need to bring that up to the fall and kind of hit the bid cycle early on. We don't want to be in a position where we're just absorbing costs because contractors, their plates are full of work. And now it's just if we get more work rate, if we don't, so be it. So they just bid high. We don't want to be in that position. Ideally, we don't want to have to pre-purchase equipment either. So there's lots of advantages to working back from a bid bid duration sometime in the fall, where we can keep everything within the project, stay conventional, not have to pre-purchase, take advantage of good competitive bidding, because contractors are looking to fill their work up for the following year. So that's slightly more aggressive than what we've done in the past, but I think it'll pay off in the long run.
Questions for Corey right now?
I, it's, Corey, one thing that, yeah. So one other thing, to the point about efficiencies, probably the most, biggest or potential for efficiencies, at least, is grouping the Highcrest work, potentially whatever's going on there. You know, that could be, could be, you know, economies of scale. One question I did have, I was hoping that Sandra could explain. This is something I learned through the process. So as you see at the bottom, I had asked for, partially because this summer, we're doing four bathrooms at Harper. And so the cost to do that is about three hundred and twenty thousand. And that's a little bit more on the significant side because of the structure of those rooms and the age and ripping open the walls and just, just the way the building just the way the building, the age of the building. And so what I had wanted in, having gone through all of our buildings and just taking a look and see where things at, and knowing that at some point, but not necessarily maybe in this next five years, but it's certainly in that six to 10 window, is starting to have to address, you know, a little bit here and there, some, updating some of the bathrooms in, in our, in our various schools. And so we had kind of outlined two different scenarios. One, significant work, which for $350,000 would be four, doing four bathrooms similar to what we're doing at Harper. Or if there was less, less significant renovation needed, you know, maybe for four bathrooms, it would be $175,000. The part I want Sandra to kind of talk about is, the part that I didn't realize is, I was thinking, great, as we have money and we're going through, you know, the next five or 10 years, and we see that a group of bathrooms need to be addressed, we'll tackle it. Well, it's not necessarily that simple because apparently when you rip, you do enough, then you have ADA compliance, and then we might lose toilet fixtures or sink fixtures, and within the school setting, there are requirements.
So I just wanted to touch base on that too, and also just to kind of clarify the, the number that is also in the general pricing. When we say four toilet rooms, we're talking about the multi-user toilet rooms too, not single-user toilets. But to Corey's point, when we do a design for toilet rooms, there's really two regulations that we have to really pay attention to. The first is going to be the two, or the Illinois Plumbing Code, and then the ADA, the Americans of this city. So they're not always working in, in our favor for both of them. The Illinois Plumbing Code will tell us the quantities of the fixtures that we need. So how many toilets, how many urinals, how many lavatories, based on the populations that we have in your school. A lot of your schools have older facilities, so some of the toilet rooms have not been changed over yet. So if we go in and actually do a renovation project, meaning we're going to be taking fixtures off the wall and replacing them, moving walls, moving doors, then ADA actually kicks in, and we have to bring that up to code to be able to have an accessible toilet stall. And what that means is you usually don't have the space and have to lose one of your plumbing fixtures. So that might mean that your entire site now is short on plumbing fixtures, which could have an effect and possibly make you add some within the school or as an addition to. So it's kind of down to a case-by-case basis, depending on the school, depending on the current layouts of what they're at now too. But it's one of the things that we have to kind of take into consideration is we don't want you to be losing plumbing fixtures because we are upgrading for ADA, if we can help it at any time. So the second number that we had, called a kind of a refresh, and that's really more of just doing finishes within the space too. So that's kind of the, the difference between the two numbers that you're seeing is one is we're assuming we have to take all the plumbing fixtures off the wall and redo the entire thing up to code. And the second one is actually just replacing finishes, tile. In some cases, we could take the existing plumbing fixtures off the wall and reinstall. And, and I think that was where the key has happened in the past is if a, so for instance, if a plumbing, if a toilet breaks and it needs to be replaced, it's considered maintenance. So that's something that the district has done in the past in other areas. But if it's a project, we need to, and we're only doing a refresh, we need, if we take them off the wall, put tile up on the wall, we need to put the same picture back.
I'm assuming we have accessible bathrooms in the building?
You do, but some of them may not have been converted back in the 90s. There are some, for instance, in the lower level of Harper, I know, that were the old toilet rooms and stuff for the boys. Whether, they might be single-stall even, but, but they're set up to be multi-users. Or there might be two, two toilets. So not every toilet room is accessible right now. And honestly, I haven't done the whole survey of all of the schools right now to kind of review that. But each school has some accessible toilets, but just not all of them, may not.
Have you done accessibility? Or are there other things that we need to bring up? Or, you know, to comply with 504?
Yeah, I, I believe there has been, and, and whenever we have been installing new toilet rooms, all the single-user toilet rooms were done, or nurses' rooms and everything, we've been bringing those all into compliance. Those are all ADA accessible. So your schools all have some. It's just there's some that are, are remaining and they're old.
And so what you're saying is there's a trade-off. If you make all the bathrooms accessible, you do toilets, and then you might have to build new bathrooms.
You may.
To the right number.
Yeah, it depends on how large the spaces are, because obviously the ADA is more of the guidelines for the clearance requirements. And so those are kind of the, what dictates, you know, when we have a five-foot by seven-foot stall or whatever, which we've been doing the larger ones too, because we've got to put in changing tables and everything. But if you have an existing bathroom or toilet room that is actually already large, we may be able to fit, fit one in and not have an issue. It's just that's, we'd have to kind of cross that bridge when we start taking a look at each individual site.
It just feels like if we're going to redo a bathroom, we wouldn't take things out, tile and put them back. We'd want to make more effort with that.
Absolutely.
Point of principle.
Absolutely. The, the goal is always to make it more accessible.
Yeah.
No, but I think that's what you have, as I said, you have some, the two toilet rooms here. You have an accessible stall already. So redoing finishes in here or replacing a fixture in here is not changing your fixture count because you already have the stall.
So Corey, right now, the bathrooms are kind of in the $600,000 hard, because they're not like called out separately?
No. I mean, when we do, when we do them, they end up being a part of our larger summer project, like construction projects, just because of the design and, and you need the architecture engineers to be a part of that. But no, they're not. I, I would, I wouldn't view them as being a part of the $600,000 historically. I would view that as being a part of a larger project. So I just had them in there. I just wanted to have that general knowledge, just to know that like, like I said, I don't know that, how much of the bathroom work would occur in, say, the first few years of five years, but certainly near the end, there, there, of this five-year window, some of these bathrooms could be addressed, particularly if we find it worthwhile or, or needing. But certainly as we jump into that six to 10-year window, I, I would envision doing, doing some bathroom, more bathroom work. I just wanted that to be like out there, just like on our minds of like, hey, these are the things that after we finish this five-year window, okay, this is what's going to be next. So that's really it for all the different projects. I think to Frank's point, this is, you know, I said we cast a wide net. There's definitely not any intention to be able to address everything on this list in five years. It was more of, some of it was knowing what's out there. Certainly there are items that we would like to pursue in this window. So I guess from my, from my perspective, are there any questions or comments from the board? As you can see, I haven't shown a specific plan yet. I would, I'm curious to have a feedback. We can talk about that then.
Yeah, I, I mean, my feedback is I'm grateful that you did all this work. It's tremendous. It, it looks like a roadmap to me, and frankly, I'd like to hear more about what you all think's important. I'm trying to think of the most constructive thing to say other than, oh, wow. And maybe it's, maybe it's, you know, because we're going to talk about the budget, right? To figure out, you know, does it, do we have the budget, you know, do we have the, I guess, revenue to keep doing what I think we've been doing, which is making a lot of capital expenditures within our budget? We haven't gone to referendum in a very long time. You know, is that the right thing, you know, if we're doing that? Because I, I think from a personal perspective, it's a lot of money. It's, we've done an amazing job at the district in doing what we've done to keep the buildings in such good repair within our budget. And, you know, I, I think the one thing I'd worry about is making sure that we're not crowding out educational-related expenses in order to maintain these old buildings. You know, and that, that'd be kind of, I think, my ultimate input. So.
Two thoughts. But first, I just wanted to understand, like, do we need to do any more work for accessibility to make our buildings more accessible? Not on here, or is there an assessment? Do you think that's important? We should just have that screen? And then the other piece is, we did the learning commons because we knew that we needed 21st century learning spaces, or I, you know, how we want to say it, that we needed to update our facilities to enhance the, the learning experience. You know, I don't know, this is probably for you and maybe for you, you know, are, are there other modifications to the buildings that we need to make to create these 21st century learning spaces? To keep our school buildings vibrant places to learn?
I, I appreciate that question, and it feels as though you're chewing me up for something that I'm interested in sharing. So in the first place, I think in terms of accessibility, I think we need to do some additional research there. I think right now our buildings are, relatively speaking, pretty accessible. We certainly ensure that there's access across each of our buildings for toilet rooms and for getting to the second floor through the elevator systems and those things. But we can certainly do some additional research. I have a question. I think in terms of the second question, which is 20% for learning and the learning spaces, you're absolutely right that the learning commons helped move things forward significantly. And that is now seen as something that we're really proud of and we use in a variety of ways. Was a tremendous investment by the board. I think the next that the board really invested in, ooh, there's my microphone. The next was the, the space to accommodate the kindergarten enrichment program, which we now have at every elementary school building, and that was a tremendous investment in what, as well. And again, gave us some flexibility for adjustments in population so that we do have the space as a little bubble might come through, both through the learning commons and through the, the additions at the elementary schools. Same thing would be true at High Crest where we put on an addition. I think if I'm speaking on behalf of our staff and our administrators, I think the enhanced learning environments would come through some air-conditioned spaces within our classrooms. I think at this point, as we have learned so much about air quality and the condition of our environment as we're learning, as we're teaching, as we're working day-to-day, I think that is something that would be strongly advocated for. And I think it is on the horizon, and I appreciate the board really taking a close look at that as the next step. Certainly, large space air conditioning has been beneficial, but the impact on the day-to-day learning during those warmer months, we've seen it over the last even two weeks, and we still have another three or four weeks of, of school and, and work within our buildings before we break for summer. There's an impact of that. And so I think as we're looking at what are the big-ticket items, what is going to continue to move us forward in terms of teaching and learning, I think our staff would say, and I would support, looking at classroom spaces and air conditioning as, as Corey is kind of leading us down the path toward, I think is something we, we have to take a close look at. And again, that's kind of weighing, you're right, the pros and cons of are we investing in this instead of some of the other things? I think it's an important question to ask. So thank you.
Follow on to that. We talk a lot in this, it's capital budget, whatever, but, and Lisa brought up the going forward. Are there any technology enhancements that we need, I mean, like large-scale more Wi-Fi, large-scale more electronics in classrooms? I mean, if it's, you know, if it's just in the little background, that fits into lots of the other budget areas. But if there was a, in the next five years, or maybe in the six to 10-year period, do we see a technology change that requires numbers to be in this category of size?
So I'll start, but I, I can let Tony jump in. I think first and foremost, the board should be commended for its investments leading up to the last couple of years. The investment in hardware as well as the Wi-Fi and connectivity. The board, with Tony's leadership, has really done a very good job of thinking ahead of what those needs might be. That said, it's hard to predict in six to 10 years what technology might be like. We wouldn't have been able to predict what COVID would have been like. And yet, forward-thinking allowed us to be really responsive quickly to the needs that arose because we had laid a really strong foundation. So I think much of that is in place. The other area that has drawn the board's attention in, in the recent past is safety and security. And here again, I think the board has done a really nice job of investing in our schools' safety and security systems to the extent that we can now be talking about some of the other instructional needs that exist within our buildings because you have invested in the, the building additions, the learning commons, technology and the infrastructure there, and security and safety. We are able to start to turn our attention to some of those other needs that really truly do exist within our classrooms. With that, I'll let Tony jump in because he certainly has more of the details around technology and infrastructure there.
Yeah, there's a, there's the operational technology, and then there's the instructional technology. So I believe you're probably alluding to the operational stuff, the infrastructure behind the scenes, so the wireless. As you alluded to, we're about seven years into our existing wireless infrastructure. We did post with E-rate, and, and Corey is aware and has budgeted, I've provided him the numbers. But we are in the process of upgrading our wireless across the district. So that has been ordered, posted, and probably set to install this summer, possibly fall. Depends on supply chains. We thought we would be about six to eight months out on that, but we're learning that product's coming in quicker than we thought, which is good. So we have that. Next year, the year after, we're about due for our switches, routers, those kind of pieces in our network closets. Again, we're about seven, eight years from the time of replacing those. If you recall, and if you've been on this board, you know that we hit everything pretty much around the same time, 2015, 2016. So we are becoming due for those things. We want Wi-Fi and tech just to work. We don't want our, the goal is for our staff not to think about it. We want them to come to work, power up their device, do what they do, and not worry, is it going to work today or is it not? So that's the kind of environment that we're setting up. On the instructional side, no, we've done, as Dr. Crumis Schooly alluded to, the one-to-one devices in kids' hands. That's going great. Probably the biggest thing that we're working on now is a four-year replacement plan on the way we display in classrooms. So moving us from smart boards to either an interactive display in kindergarten, first grade, and special ed rooms, or to a, a TV. So moving away from projectors. So we're on a four-year plan to get those replaced across the district. And again, Corey has those numbers and has been able to put them in the budget.
I guess the, the point of that was, is that in the budgets, or does it need to be in the budgets, or?
It's in there. Yeah, it's in there and it's factored into like when I've done five-year modeling of different scenarios.
And, and one follow-up, just because I was in the industry, so it's not just asking a buzzword. Are we looking at 5G? And again, the six to 10 years, it's hard to plug things in, but, but we know that it's on the cusp of being more interactive and at least the potential of things you can do with, with that type of technology. Are we laying the foundations, or is that just too far ahead?
No, I mean cellular-wise, we, we don't really have any devices that we work off of, other than hotspots and maybe a couple of district cell phones. But our Wi-Fi that we're, went with, we went with the bidder that actually proposed the newest technology so we could kick that can down the road. Everybody else had proposed, we had six proposals, and five out of the six were existing technology with one out of the six being that next generation. And that's the one we went with. So. So, uh, even if it meant we had to wait a year to get it, um, but it turns out product became, uh, available. So in this case, we won, so to speak. So that newer, faster, uh, wifi, we're, that's what we'll be installing. We can't take total advantage of that until we replace the switches and routers in about a year or two behind the scenes. But once we do that in tandem, we'll have a very nice experience. Plus we are retrofitting spaces that didn't have wifi before. So we're, uh, included in the planner, all the hallways, boiler rooms. Our goal is to out, is to have 100% coverage across our schools. So no matter what area is used, we have a group of kids that always meet here in this one corner of the building, you got wifi. You know, we have a HVAC guy that needs to go and read the boiler, you got wifi. So that's the kind of environment we're setting up. And, uh, in addition to that, uh, I guess you could call it a silver lining since we talked so much about this, uh, of COVID, some additional outdoor APs. So Junior High and Highcrest will each have five outdoor access points where teachers then can take their classes out and, and find at least one of five, uh, areas that they can use. Elementarys would have to.
Sorry to break in, but it kind of tied into.
No, these are, yeah, and frankly, thank you for pointing it out because these are all very large, expensive purchases. Just know that they are, uh, happening thoughtfully, uh, behind the scenes and, and where Corey is aware of, of these projects.
Hey, now, the queue back. Did you have a follow-up?
I have a follow-up, but Erin, you haven't spoken, so go ahead.
Your follow-ups about the technology might make sense for you.
No, it's more, it's going back to the air conditioning in the bathrooms.
I'm going back there too. So, okay. Getting back to the air conditioning, um, I couldn't agree more with Dr. Kremeskoli's perspective and, um, what she shared on behalf of her staff's perspective. I have spent the last seven years working in North Shore schools and largely on air conditioned spaces. And the impact on the learning cannot be overstated. I lost count of how many kids last week came to me very distressed about how hot it was. When we were trying to settle in after lunch and PE, which is an academic learning, there were literally two girls screaming at each other, arguing over which was hotter, outdoor PE or indoor PE? So you can imagine how that, how that went. As so as on a philosophical level, I think this should be a huge priority for us. And now as far as I would like to know what exactly we can afford, because I'm going to guess we have to make some choices. And I would be curious to know if you have ideas of which areas might seem to be areas we should prioritize at first glance. If we're looking at air conditioning, the remaining classrooms at Highcrest, that's a school that every student in the district will go through. And we already heard that there could be some, some efficiencies grouping that work together. But I would be curious to know exactly what we can afford and what your suggestions are for how we do this because I think it is a priority.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, your opinion both of like really matters, right? We are a, an institution of learning. So what we, I agree, we need to prioritize that. And the other thing I just wondered, I also like to work on the bathrooms because I don't know, like bathrooms are really important to kids. Right? I mean, they'll hold it all day if they think that a bathroom isn't suitable. Just happen to know that that's true. So I want to just say that that also impacts teaching and learning. And so I appreciate that it's on.
I just want to, I, I totally agree. I think, uh, your comments about how the board and the district has planned in advance for needs that ended up being beneficial. This feels like an area, this problem is not going to get smaller, it's going to get larger. When you think about the amount of time people are uncomfortable and unable to learn in the building, it's just increased with every year. So I, yeah, I think having an idea of what's reasonable philosophically, how can we go about getting to a higher rated classrooms, the air conditioning? Yeah, that's right.
Good. I have to do more, but just kind of follow up on the air conditioning thing. Historically, one of the big things and we saw success from that is we prioritize at least one large space per, per school. And I think we're even starting to look at maybe a second large space. I, I think it'd be worthwhile us deciding if the shift should be, now that we have a large space in school, that the next thing is looking at allocating our finite resources toward classrooms as opposed to finishing the rest of the large spaces. It does, it's, it kind of, it looked different than where we were a couple of years ago. So we should probably kind of just formalize the, the, whatever. That the right words for that is, again, that's a high level philosophical direction. If that's what we want to do, um, that'd be good to have as kind of as a background for, for planning. And when we get to budgets, we can figure out what would just be everything.
That really is the question though, Frank. So thank you for saying that, um, so clearly that it, the board has, has started to make a shift this year, I think, away from continued investment in the large space air conditionings. If, if in fact, we can do classroom spaces. And again, that's a financial question, but it is a philosophical question. It, it, it does cost more to do instructional spaces, but if, if we're trading off, I think, I think that really is the question that we're coming to the board with and have been throughout this year. Do we continue to invest in the large spaces, which are beneficial and have helped tremendously? But the impact of those compared to the impact of a classroom space that's air conditioned, i- is really dramatic, really significant. And so that, you're, you're absolutely right on that we, we need that direction from the board.
I think we shifted, I mean, when we had nothing, we needed the large spaces, so we had something.
That's right.
You know, we have that baseline. And, and I just wanted, because it was kind of the default of the board, you know, things change and it's been a while. But what's kind of the default, we're going to, which it's good to give that direction for future planning. And then we can figure out, you know, what can we do in that, what order of that.
Right. Absolutely. Thank you. The, if, it, just in case someone hadn't noticed, in your packet that's at your desk on the back page, there is a summary of that. I think Corey might've shared it for a second as well, but.
Yeah, so we have that within the, within the board's packet. And not only is there the one-page summary that kind of details out the large space, but the percentage of classrooms. I also included like a diagram for the board and it shows which classroom, the, any classroom that's blue has AC now. And, um, anything that's, that's shaped, that's still shaded white is, is not, doesn't have AC. So that's more for the board's reference, I'm not going to share it on my screen, but, um, it's a good visual. It's one of the things as we went through this process, I was curious. I, I was just thinking about AC, I was looking at, I wanted to look at it two ways. One, uh, one-page summary that kind of put every, all information there and then also to see visually, what are the, what do the buildings look like right now? So that said, do you want me to proceed? I have, I do have a few questions, like I could ask.
Should we proceed? Should we pause for just a second?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Do that for multiple purposes.
That sounds great. Let's take five minutes so we can give you our full attention.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks everybody for your patience. We can resume where we were.
Okay. All right, so back to the conversation about air conditioning and what projects we might tackle in the next five years. So as you can imagine, um, obviously we have an idea of what we think we have, what, what we think we can accomplish. As I said, there's a lot of information. As much as getting direction today is letting the board know what is possible. I think if you look ahead to the agenda, like we have Liz from Raymond James to help explain that component of like what is possible for us. So as I talk about the next part of, you know, possible scenarios or getting a little additional feedback to the board, leading into our June meeting where we would hope to set, define a direction, I will share what I believe is, is possible. So let me share. Okay. So back to the. All right, so thinking, I have another slide after this. So thinking ahead to what composition of projects, to Frank's point, there's really buckets. So really of the things that we know we really need and want to address. There's the, the piping replacement in this building. There's the roof that we would tackle at the junior high. We have UNIVENTS and building automation systems at Highcrest. And then if we can fit it in there, it would be nice to do the windows at the junior high, um, given their age. But those can be, like when stuff breaks, we're still able to address it. So we have some flexibility there. We also have some flexibility with the roof. We have a, a little bit of flexibility with the Highcrest UNIVENTS. So as I think ahead of like what's possible. All right, so this is kind of a scenario that I've drawn up that incorporates a lot of classroom air conditioning. Here, let me make this a little bigger. There you go. So when I think about what's possible and, and part of this will require a little bit of faith until Liz can share it and then I can share more defined plan next month. When I look at stuff, um, adding, being, being able to go in and add air conditioning to the classrooms is something that we can do. Now, there's a couple of questions I'll have at the end of this for the board to get a little extra direction. But I believe it's possible to add, to finish off all the classrooms with AC at Ramona Harper, Highcrest and Central. There may be a question at Highcrest of like, what, what, what do we want to do? But, um, and when looking at this first scenario, um, we would be able to do a couple of them in the summer of 23 and then we would, whatever two we didn't choose, we would do in the summer of 24. Then in the summer of 25, we would be looking at, um, doing the, the partial roof replacement to junior high. Or if the roof is still functioning well, we would have the opportunity to then swap and add the last, uh, let's see, what is it? About 12, 12 classrooms at the junior high on the first floor, add air conditioning to those classrooms, which would push the repli, roof replacement to 26. Or if things go well, one of the things I've learned to be in here, as you go through and you have estimates and you make plans, it's always nice to, after you have completed bids, to see what did that actual pricing come in? In many of our bids, we've been able to come in, um, well below what our, what our project budget was. In some, in one case, the McKenzie project this year, we were very close, we were still under, but we were, we were close. Um, and then thinking, you know, big picture, you know, as we finish each year, we get, we get a little bit of clarity on like, hey, why did we finish budget to actual? So we, every year, we're, it seems like every five to six months, we're getting, you know, new information that can, can be, can be very beneficial to us. And what I've seen in two years here, that, that has been the case. So that, that's an opportunity. And then at the end of this window, we would have, um, a window replacement. Another scenario is to basically have the same, similar plan. The one difference would be in the, in the first year, we would, uh, tackle three schools by adding air conditioning to them and then do the MAC. And then whatever building was left, we'd do in the summer of 24. And then the last three years, with the stuff at the junior high would, would all into a similar pattern. And then there is one additional scenario, which really, um, kind of hits the accelerator on adding air conditioning to the classrooms. And this one is something that I can't say it's not possible, but I can't say that we definitively can do it yet. We're still working through that. And if it's something that seems appealing to the board, then we will spend a lot of time between now and June to iron out some of the potential roadblocks to see truly can we do this? And that would be to take the four schools that we're talking about, Ramona Harper and Central, and attempt to air condition all, all four of them, um, next summer. Under this scenario, then we would not, at least as constructed right now, we wouldn't do any projects in the summer of 24. And then the, the junior high stuff would be in the backend pending, you know, some of those ones in 25, 26, 27 could potentially get bored a little bit, uh, depending upon uh, where we're at with, um, you know, budget to actuals and project bids on prior projects. So those are, those are just kind of some scenarios that I've looked at Liz's here. Obviously, a, a component to that would be issuing, issuing some bonds and the structure of that we'll talk about during the, the finance part. But when I've looked at, I've looked at a, a lot of scenarios and certainly before we would have the board, say, this is the plan we want to go forward with, we'll show you more of the finance of like, okay, this is what it looks like. The one thing I, uh, would say about any of these options, or particularly option three, the one thing that's probably different from option three versus options one and two is that at the end of fiscal year 24, so like June 30th, 2024, at least as I've looked at things, our fund balance would likely, even with a bond issuance, would likely drop to probably 38 or 39%. But then at the end of fiscal year 25, we would be back into that low 40 range. So it's really a, a momentary, uh, a dip. And the reason for that is by doing all four in one summer, you're pushing all the costs for those projects in the fiscal years 23 and 24, whereas if you do three in one or two in two, that some of that project cost gets pushed out to fiscal year 25, which would then allow each year to stay above 40%. So that's kind of, that's kind of what we believe is, is possible. I guess we're, I guess really the questions I have for the, for the board, when you, when you look at the, and I'll switch, switch documents here for a second. I, I guess really the, the first question is, as I formulate a plan leading to next month, I think based upon our initial work conversation, is, is the direction to try and tackle these classroom air conditioning projects? Then if yes, when you look at this bottom row in the document that I've shared, you see that bringing Ramona Harper Central to 100%, um, that would put them on level with McKenzie. Then really the next question I guess I have, would have for the board is, in our, in our planning, do we want to eventually at the, by the end of this window or, you know, through this plan, bring the Highcrest and Junior High to 100% of the classrooms? Or do we just want to bring Highcrest to the level that Junior High is? Which is doing, you know, an additional group of classrooms, but not everything? That's really kind of the, the feedback I'm looking for. And I can structure the plans and, you know, prepare our information leading into the, the June meeting. I did want to share, Joe, could you just add a couple of thoughts on like, you know, the, the, the third scenario is I think obviously the most aggressive. I just want to have Joe share his thoughts on why, you know, if you, if you look at our, the projects that we're looking to consider potentially over the next five years and then the market conditions and, you know, how, how much each of these project costs? And Joe has some thoughts on where it may be advantageous if we can make it work to try and tackle all four.
Right, and at a minimum, at least have a bid structure that creates flexibility. Just because we bid something this year for the summer of 23 doesn't necessarily mean that the board has to approve it. So we can create some flexibility, maybe, maybe have a base bid for each school. Maybe we have some options where, um, certainly all of it would be completed in summer of 2023. Maybe two, two are in 2024, but we can create a bid form where we see what all those options are. We can see what the cost differential would be if we did them in 23 or 24. It's, it's really, it's something that, um, you know, we could take advantage of. If, but it all starts with when we're going out to bid and when we bid these projects. If we can, if we can, um, get going on design and, and shoot for, uh, even if it's a late fall out to bid, I think there could be great benefit in that. But I think either way, we create the flexibility, um, you know, on bid day, just, just so we have an avenue. just, just so we have an avenue where it's not all or nothing. Okay?
Joe, if, in terms of, and I know we've talked a little bit about this, but in terms of getting the go on the design work, if, if the board were willing to give you that authority, give us that authority to move forward with the design work, is that then applicable whether we do it in the summer of 23 versus the summer of 25 or 26? If that ends up being the decision of the board, that design work is still viable for the next four or five years?
Right. I, I always say it's, it's risky if it's a design that's being created and you're spending money on a design that, for a project that might not go. But in this case, we're going to have the same mechanical needs, whether it's next year or 24 or beyond. So it's a design that's not going to be wasted. It's going to be utilized at some point. So I, I definitely think it's good to be proactive from a design standpoint.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the, just one of the things as, as Joe and I had talked about this option, Joe had kind of shared with me, this has typically been true, but more so this past year was, Joe really referenced, when you put a project out to bid, was it the being in the top like 20, first 25% out to market? Or, you know, whatever that range is. And so particularly for this past bidding season, when it started in the late fall and then went through, you know, even like into March, you know, what actual bids were coming back from those early ones? And even, you know, we saw it, right? We did, I think we went out to bid for Harper's project, first week of November. We opened like Monday or Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And, you know, I, I think the, the value there was incredible. If we had done that same bidding process several months later, I, I'm quite certain that we would not have seen that, that same value. So I think that's one of the options that, that we're weighing. We are, we know we're asking the board to potentially, you know, spend a lot of money to address these, these projects, but we're also aware that, you know, this may be a way to try and make the cost as low as possible.
Right. That, that, that's a great goal before Thanksgiving, to have, at least have the bids opened up. Approval can take place in December, but I would, I would, I'd like to see that be sort of worst cases, just having that bid opening before Thanksgiving. It's a perfect time. I mean, I, the, I know I mentioned it earlier, there's just, there's a tremendous amount of work. I mean, with our firm, other, other competitors of ours, there's backlog, two, three in the year four already. Lot of referendum work coming up. It's going to be extremely busy. Something to consider.
Any, yeah, go ahead. Questions, comments?
So I have a bunch of thoughts and questions, but just first and foremost, if we were to consider option three, is there any concern about programming? In terms of summer programming, like would we be able to accomplish that and run our summer programs?
There's still.
To me, before I was able to think about that, I'd want to know that.
Yeah. No, I mean, if you do four, and you think about the way these projects are, I mean, they're everywhere in the building. Like it's a lot of work and a lot of places. But in an individual classroom, it may not be a lot, but you're everywhere. So the buildings would be closed. So you would have four buildings potentially closed under this scenario.
We need, what do we need?
Well, historically, historically, we, at least from what I've seen, we've never done more than three. So we've typically had, you know, three, usually one of our junior high or High Crest, and then two of our elementaries. Like I said, I think if we were to go down this path, there, there are things that we still need to try and iron out exactly what they would look like. As I said, at, at least where I'm sitting right now, it's not impossible. And it's certainly, or both, both options are still on the table, I guess.
And I would just add, we have to keep in mind the amount of sharing of our space that happens over the summer. So our programming takes up a certain amount of space. And then we share the availability, if we have space available, we share with the park district as is part of our agreement. And so we want to be respectful of that as well as we're planning. I, I think that we would be able to accomplish that. We simply need to plan carefully and thoughtfully and be in regular communication with them. For sure, WJHS would be available and McKenzie would be available, even if you took the most aggressive approach. Those are two buildings that have some pretty significant space. Granted, the entire building would probably then be in use, but maybe there's some efficiencies there as well. So it would, it would take some planning, but I think we can get there.
Yes, I would just say philosophically, if we're moving toward thinking about classroom spaces, which I think we should, it's where students spend the most of their day. I don't see why our goal wouldn't be ultimately 100% because you're either in there or you're not. Right? Like a large space, you can rotate through, and, and I guess you could do that with classrooms too. I, I don't know how long it'll take us to get there, but to me, the goal, I think, my, in my mind, would be 100%. And that leaves the question of how long it takes to get there open. I don't know. I'm curious what other people think. I don't, if we're, if we're going to make massive commitment toward air conditioning classrooms, I would think it would be all of them. I'm curious what others think.
Yeah, I agree. A hundred percent. I, I like the idea of going out early, getting a sense of what it would all cost and doing it as early as possible.
Yes, I agree. If in terms of approving design, I would be in favor. Because we can then still decide.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah.
I think the, getting the design makes sense. As mentioned, it's not like the heating, the air conditioning ducts are going to change in three, four, or five years. We, we do have to talk about the, the funding part. But also just in terms of philosophical, I'm a little wary of having all of the must-do large projects in years three, four, and five, and not have at least one or more of those in the earlier years. We are in, in a transitionary environment with inflation and, and in historically, when there has been rising inflation, budgets got tighter and tighter. And we do need to, there are some of these things we have to do. I mean, if you have to do roofing and we've used up our money on air conditioning, no matter how important air conditioning is, then what? Then do we go into educational things? Do we have to look at other funding? I mean, to have all of them up front isn't necessary, but to have all of them at the back seems to me more risky than we really should be putting ourselves in the position. There's a couple of them, you know, does look like if we don't do them in this five-year period, they start becoming problematical. So we want to make sure we don't have three problematical things, you know, and.
You're thinking like boilers?
Yeah, well, there is a boiler roof and windows. And I don't know, windows on the borderline maybe, depending on, but certainly boilers and roofs, there's, there's a point where they're old. And then you suddenly have a, like with the roof, you know, the boiler broke and, you know, we need to spend $2 million on replacing the boiler. That could be a big item if we're already dipping into the 40% or less because of inflationary cash flow issues. So I, I think a scenario, whether it's doing air conditioning sooner than later or whatever, but I think we need to have at least some of the mandatory projects a little earlier than all of them at year three, four, five.
If I understand it right, I didn't think any of the boilers were mandatory in the first five years, based on what Cory found out.
No, there, there's, they varied. There's.
I was to for High Crest Middle School. And again, I think that's a, a little ways out. I think Frank is suggesting that there's always a possibility of a failure to occur, as we've seen with the roof that needs to be replaced now a little bit sooner than before. And so it's just a matter of balancing to ensure that if there were an emergency, right now, the prediction is that's a little further out. We know it's out there, but it's a little further out. So we just need to be thoughtful about making sure that we have enough reserves to take care of an emergency should one arise. But I think, Aaron, your point is we can't anticipate that. We can just make sure we're in a good spot to take care of an emergency that were to arise. Joe, I don't know. You probably have more details or Cory about that than I do. The anticipated needs.
Right. No, I mean, certainly for whether it's boilers or roofs, something, any one of them, something could happen and we need to address it sooner than we anticipate. Similar to the central roof. I guess the part that in my conversations and kind of planning this out, the part that makes me comfortable with it is that on the boiler side, in talking with our team, like the structure of the boilers are, are all in good shape. But like if any part, any other part of it were to break, in talking with our team, like, we, A, we have redundancy, but like two, we would be able to fix it. Like those are replaceable parts, whereas like the exterior, like shell or the outside of the boiler, if that were to go bad or become an issue, like then we would need to replace it, like there wouldn't, there wouldn't be an option. And then on the roofing side, yeah, as the roofs get bad, if something were to need to get pushed up. I guess the one nice thing of our roofs, of having many different sections, is that what is the likelihood that every section, right? Like we had part of a section at Central that needs to be repaired, but yet there's, nearly that whole roof is, is 21 years old. So, but yet they're, they're, they're in good shape. So I guess where I'm at is could something in boilers and roofs pop forward from that six to 10-year range or like, you know, put pressure on being, need to, need to be, needing to be in year five? Yeah. But I, I guess where I'm at is I don't think it would be all of something. It would probably be part of something. And I think when you see our, our presentation with Liz and, and just kind of everything that I would present then in June, I, I think we're able to handle that. So.
What kind of, what further direction do you need? How can we be helpful?
Okay, so I guess from my perspective, like from our perspective, I think the end goal was always, obviously one piece is to kind of set that five-year capital projects plan at the June committee of the whole, or at least to get that direction, whether we do that at the committee of the whole or the board meeting in June. One of those two. But then I think probably the most important thing of the immediate need is getting board approval for design, to incur, to incur design cost after that June meeting. I think, at least as I think about things, whether it's leading into summer 23 or going out in future years. I think one of the nice things I like about having a plan that we know or a path that we want to go down is, it should make it easier for us to come May or June every year to kind of check in and say, all right, time to start incurring design cost, which allows us, allows the design team to get everything done. Hopefully then we go out to bid by like that November 1st-ish date, open up before Thanksgiving. Hopefully things go well. We're in that early bidding window. We approve in December. So that's kind of like where I'm at is like, I, at the end of June, that June meeting, having the board say, these are the projects that we give you guys the authority to incur design cost. That's really what I'm looking for. And then obviously the five-year plan, whether it's very specific of like this project this summer or it's more of a rough outline of like, these are the air conditioning and other projects that we want to tackle in the next five years, that would be another piece. So I think on some level, I've gotten some of it, I guess. We will work to see what is possible and have some options for the board at the June meeting. So I think, I think we've got, heard everybody's direction on the, on the plan.
I want to echo John's appreciation. This is so helpful. And I think as board members, having older buildings, it is, this is so important. And knowing they're being planned for so thoughtfully, it's really appreciable.
Thank you.
And it's exciting. I mean, I think we have exciting options to think about regardless of where we plan.
I think there's, there is a true potential in, in sight with our, with our plan over the next five years. I think, I think we may be able to start to feel some real differences within our buildings in this regard. So it will take some thoughtful planning. And I think the slow and steady, let's, let's look at approval for design work first. And then let's see what happens in the November bid process. And making sure, as, as I think is important to all of us, making sure that we have decision points along the way so that if something does change, if the economy or something changes in terms of what we right now can predict, we have the ability then to make adjustments within the plan and, and adjust in that decision point moment.
Thank you so much. Great. Okay, so I think that brings us to school finance. So I want to thank our team for being here. Thank you for the donuts. Thanks for being with us in person. And I will turn it over to Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Paling. So now I think we're going to have more substantial presentations or additional substantial presentations, I should say. So I'll turn it over to you, Cory, to, I think, let's do a preview. So introduce Liz Hennessy from Raymond James. Thank you for being here, Liz. And lunch fees we're going to talk about and the draft budget for 2023.
I will, I'll drive her presentation and then, but let's do the talking. All right.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. Okay, so I'll start on page four and give you an update on the market. I'm sure you've been reading in the newspaper how interest rates are going up, and they certainly are. So far, the Fed has raised interest rates 75 basis points this year, looking at another 50 in June, and probably raising rates at every subsequent meeting they have this year. The question for us is how much of this, these rate increases are already built into interest rates, which are somewhat forward-looking, and how much is yet to go? So this graph shows our AAA municipal market data index going back to January of 19. And we've got the purple line is the one year, the red line is the 10-year, the yellow line is the 30-year, and then the blue line is the 10-year US Treasury bond. So you saw how rates came down till March of 2020. We hit the pandemic. There was massive selling and interest rates went up, the quickest they ever have in anticipation of everything shutting down and nobody, buddy being able to pay their, their debt. Fed stepped in, lowered interest rates, became the lender of last resort. Rates came down. And then in August of 2020, we hit our historical low point in interest rates. Since then, we've been very flat, within a range on interest rates. And within that time, of course, you got your debt certificates sold. Then starting in January of '22, with the really high CPI numbers coming in, 7% in December, over December. And most recently, I think the highest was 8.6, now down to 8.3% CPI. The rates are going up as the Fed tries to raise rates to tamp down inflation. So we were pretty much up to the point we were in January of 19. The rates have gone up super fast, but I think it's important to realize that we're still not higher than we were, you know, pre-pandemic. And the other thing to notice is these three lines are getting really close together. What that means is short-term rates and long-term rates. What that means is short-term rates and long-term rates are, both are, are not that different. Okay? So the yield curve is flat, meaning, you know, it's certainly all higher, but long-term borrowing is relatively, um, inexpensive still. So let's go to the next couple of pages and we'll just review quickly your debt limit. Um, page six, it's very large at a hundred and fourteen point nine million. That's based on our six point nine percent statute. We do know that, um, we don't have the 2021 EAV yet. And that there's going to be a big delay in, in property taxes this year as the county and the Board of Review tries to get on the same computer system. Page seven talks about non-referendum limited bonds. The district's debt service extension base is a million five ninety in levy year twenty-one. The good news is levy year twenty-two is going to give us a five percent CPI, which is the maximum under the tax limitation law. That's going to apply to your debt service extension base as well. Give us some more bonding authority. Let's go to the next page. This is the working cash limit. Uh, that's a separate statutory limit based on the formula you see here. That's fifty point seven million. Next page. These numbers are small, so I gave you some paper to look at as well. What we've got here is the current debt service extension base bonds outstanding and CPI assumptions for the future. So let me direct you to the column kind of in the middle of the page that says CPI growth. And you can see in twenty-two levy year, five percent is it. So because it was seven percent year over year and the maximum under the tax limitation law is five percent, that's the number. Going forward, we've been still fairly conservative as we always are, three percent, two percent, two percent, then back down to one point five percent. Which has been the typical projection we use for the purpose of the debt service extension base. So the column moving to the right is the non-referendum debt service, uh, that you're paying currently on outstanding bonds. And then the tax rate, which is, you know, around eight cents or so. And then you can see, um, in the far right column, you've got remaining debt service extension base capacity. Um, you know, not a ton until we get to the year twenty twenty-five, where we purposely made a window, if you will, to issue more non-referendum debt. The district's always been very, um, conservative in its approach to debt issue, leaving room within the next ten years to issue additional bonds. Using these debt service extension based bonds. And it's probably worth mentioning that this is an separate source of revenue versus your levy. You've got your operating levy. Uh, and the debt certificates we issued earlier this year are paid from that. But these type of bonds paid from the debt service extension base is a separate levy in the debt service fund. So it doesn't negatively impact your operating funds in any way. Let's go to the next page. Got two options for consideration. Um, Corey and I have been talking and looking at options all along, you know, because we put that window in twenty twenty-five. If we issue bonds sooner than that, we have some debt service extension base to pay back. But we also have accumulated balance in the debt service fund. You know, the debt service fund is one of the unique funds that, um, the county clerk wants to make sure you have enough money in there to pay your bond. So they add a loss and collection factor each year of five percent to that fund. It's much higher than any other funds because they want to make sure school districts can pay their bonds. And not all school districts enjoy the high collection rate that you do here in Willmatt. So what happens is that money earns interest and it builds up in the debt service fund. And it can't be used for any other purpose than to pay debt service on bonds. You can't transfer it to the Ed Fund or the O and M Fund. It's got to stay in that debt service fund. So that gives us the possibility to go ahead and pay interest on the bonds. Um, and if you look at this, um, page in the middle under, uh, the green highlighted, uh, box where it says. The debt service on this option, which is eleven point four million issued in October of twenty-three. And right next to it, it says less capitalized interest or F O H, which is funds on hand. So we're using the funds on hand, or at least a million forty-four of it, to pay the additional interest. Until the debt service extension base comes fully online, which is a twenty twenty-five levy year. So that works out really well. Um, another tool we have is called capitalized interest, where we use part of the bond proceeds. But if you have those funds available, it's much less expensive to the financing. So interest rates we're using here, we are using, um, current rates as of April twenty-nine. Plus one hundred basis points cushion or one percent cushion. So we're again, trying to be super conservative. The rates on these bonds I know look very different than rates you're used to seeing in the one and two percent on the debt that you typically issue. So right now we're looking at an all-inход just cost of four point three three percent. Again, this is for eleven point four million repaid over thirteen years with a window in twenty thirty. So again, you know, we're making sure that you have room in the future. If you look at the five-year facility plan, you know, that takes you out to twenty-six. We've got the window in twenty thirty for more bonds. But the district has kind of kept these two sources of, um, funding, uh, borrowing going. One, the debt service extension base and the other being the debt certificates that we issued last year. So you kind of go back and forth between those two options. The debt certificates can be refunded and reissued, I believe, before the twenty thirty year. So, you know, you should have flexibility in the future. We go to the next page. It's just a graphic of this. I think this graphic sometimes helps. The blue bars are the proposed, um, eleven point four million, uh, paid back over thirteen years with a window. To issue new debt in twenty thirty. You can see how the bars drop down in that year. If we go to page twelve, we've got, uh, an option for twelve million. This does not have a window in twenty thirty, but, um, the bonds are paid off again in thirteen years, but you have more room in twenty thirty-five. Little bit lower interest costs because we're paying bonds off quicker. But, um, again, no window for reissuance in twenty thirty. So this would in fact not give you much flexibility till twenty thirty-five, um, for this twelve million option. And then here's the graphic on that. You can see the bars don't go down till that year twenty thirty-five. So these are just some options we thought we'd throw out. This would be part of your plan to fund capital over the next five years. You'd also be using district funds, the amounts that you use annually, um, to pay it off. Questions?
Yeah, maybe I'll start. I'm sorry. Um, Liz, maybe, um, if you could go back and give us like the big picture of what we've done in the past, how this is different. That might be a useful starting point for.
Sure. So, um, you know, as I mentioned, the district really uses three sources to fund its capital projects. Um, fun, uh, fund balance. Um, working cash fund bonds, which these are a type of these D sub bonds and debt certificates. And, you know, you've done a good job of making sure there's flexibility in each of those sources. So, so you can kind of, uh, use debt certificates one year, come back and use D sub bonds the next time you borrow. Like every five, three to five years. Okay? So, um, that's nice. So you're keeping all your debt short within right around ten years. And giving flexibility for future issues. Um, the last time we borrowed D sub bonds, uh, was in twenty fourteen in conjunction with a refunding, I believe. Do I have that right? Or was it twenty seventeen? Sorry, I should have brought my whole history here.
Listen out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was at least, you know, five years ago. Right? So then we came back and did debt certificates last year. And typically we would have waited a few more years. You saw the window in twenty-five to do another D sub issue. But as you have this kind of opportunity to get some of this work done. And the fact that you have this accumulated fund balance in the debt service fund that can't be used for anything else. It works well to go ahead and pull the trigger on the new D sub bond issue, um, next year sooner than originally planned. Simply because you can and you've got the needs.
Would it be fair to, between the two options, option one and option two, option two would be a, a bigger change from past, um, planning that the board has made. Whereas option one aligns much more closely because you then have the option in approximately five years to reissue what you want. And that option, that flexibility has been kind of a, um, uh, uh, something the board has really stayed true to for many years. Option two would be a little further away from what the board has done in recent history.
Yes, I agree. I think that flexibility is super important.
Along, along those lines, um, my recollection is we've always philosophically tried to hold our, our debt to ten years. As opposed to thirteen. Um, so staying with the concept of option one. And leaving some debt capacity. What would the proceeds have to drop to if it was ten years? So we'd still have, I'm trying to.
Yeah, if we went strictly ten years from twenty twenty-three, it'd take us about through twenty thirty-three. We might have three million dollars less, roughly. So instead of eleven point four million, eight point four million.
Yeah, because again, looking at historic, we've had a couple of things. One, we've kept a little bit of dry powder in case something comes up. And we've also kept it to ten years so that we don't tie ourselves down for significantly longer than, than our. Vision, you know, so to speak. So, so that, that's why I asked the question. So if we maintain both of those philosophies, we'd be in the neighborhood of eight million dollars in ten years, but still have some class. So basically, option one for eight million dollars would keep both of those historical trends.
True. It would limit what we would be able to do then in the next five years. So again, kind of that's the, that would be the trade-off there.
But yeah, but we, we don't have infinite money. We don't, we've never tried to have infinite money. We're not even talking about that now. And we've always paced ourselves, um, at some rate, and this would let us do both. We accelerate some, but still retain the financial directions that we've had for these two videos. Anyway, so it's another.
Well, I think, I think it's helpful to understand the context of, of this. So, so you're saying Frank, that eight million is, eight million is more in line with what we've done in the past.
But, uh, I mean, those, those two parameters, I mean, the absolute numbers, I mean, that gets complicated. But they have some dry powder and to keep that in ten years or less, um, eight million would fit both of them. Yeah.
And, you know, I, I agree with that, but the, the thing that is allowing us to go now before the window opens is that funds on hand. Which is paying a lot of those first three years. So if we take off the three years, we're at the ten year. You see what I mean? We're only able to access the market sooner, but for, I mean, efficiently, um, sooner because you have those funds on.
So we'd still be able to use those funds with a ten-year eight million?
Yes. Sure.
Yes, Erin.
I get what Frank is saying about the historical precedent. Am I understanding that you would not say that option one is proven?
Correct.
Option one is what?
I used a double negative there. So I guess I would say is, in your opinion, option one is proven.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah. And you know, you're financing air conditioning and some other capital projects that are going to last well beyond the thirteen-year repayment on the bonds.
So as a strictly devil's advocate for now, but I think it's got to be one of the scenarios that we think of. In two thousand eight, financial things kind of went wrong. Inflation went up. Two thousand eleven, we had run through, you know, ten, fifteen percent of our reserves and had to go through a referendum. I'm not predicting that, but certainly we're not as far away from that as I'd like to be. Um, so if inflation is, goes up this year and costs go faster than the rate of our levy. And two years from now, we're in low reserves and we go out to the public and we say, we need a referendum. What scenario for this would we want to have in our history if we had to go to a referendum two or three years from now?
Yeah, I guess playing devil's advocate to the devil's advocate. The period of time you're talking about, we had a fund balance of thirty percent. Right? No, I mean, I mean, that was our, that was our low bar, right?
No.
And now our low bar is forty. The state requires us to be at thirty, right? So don't we have a natural cushion built in?
We had, at the time that referendum stuff was played up to get forty and started the referendum, but we, um, we lowered the, the target to thirty to show that we were being.
Yeah, I, I get it. You know, devil's advocate, but I think, um, I'm, I'm stuck with the, we're, we're probably going to spend. I mean, we're figuring out how to spend the money to do these capital improvements that are going to last a really long time. And we're going to pay it pretty conservatively in my mind. Because, because I, I think vaguely recall, um, you know, there should be some matching between your expense and your, your, your debt. And we're basically paying really long-term costs, like the windows and the air conditioner over a period of ten or so years. And I think we're seeing a plan where that's the plan, you know, and not going out for a referendum. So I, I mean, I think that's what's happening in this presentation.
So the five million or so that we just added in the last couple of months, is that in a capital projects reserve? Fund? Or is that kind of been blended into our forty-five percent reserve?
Well, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I assume the answer, but Corey, did you, did you follow that question?
Yeah, I mean, the debt certificates that we just issued by the end of, by the end of the summer, like those three projects will carry that. So it'll be spent.
Yeah, on capital improvements.
I, I think we're. We're being more aggressive in this than we have in the last fifteen years. At a time when the economy is more risky than it's been in the last ten years. And I think that's, got the potential of, of having a problem.
I, I think that's a, appreciate that input. Does anybody else have any comments, questions?
Is option one the reconciliation?
So when, when Liz and I talked about like kind of how to share this information with the board, I maybe think of it a little differently. I think option one is not necessarily like, hey, this is the plan. We're definitely doing exactly this, this amount. I mean, that's roughly what I would like to see and that's what's available. Uh, the number in my head was always, you know, something around eleven million for proceeds. Um, option one is the, the structure that, that I, I prefer to see. I think it gives us tremendous flexibility. And if you. And if you think back to our conversation, right, so like, say we issue this money, we're going to spend it on projects in a couple of years or maybe one year. And then, you know, we'll have a few years until we have the ability to tap debt cert, debt certificates in the later part of the twenty twenties, and then this in twenty thirty. But the one thing that gives me comfort is that if you think back to our debt certificate conversation, when we ultimately made that decision of how much did we want to repay, right? We'd always been at eight hundred thousand for a long time. Our budget, our total budget has grown. We chose one million. If we had, when the districts first started doing that certificates, the percentage of the overall operating budget, if you had made that percentage the same as when we made the debt certificate issuance a few months ago, we would have had a repayment of one point two million. We, we gave ourselves a cushion, right? We, we kind of split the difference. So I guess where I'm going is seeing where inflation and rising costs like our budget is going to incrementally grow throughout this decade. If we were to find ourselves in a pinch, we have the ability to issue more debt certificates, a small amount. Now, it wouldn't be what we did, but it would be a small amount. And if we think about how we've been planning for these projects, you know, I think, as I talked about them, very intentional about things that are in that first one to five year window, and then that six to ten year window. As you can see from this setup of potential debt structure, like that was intentional, like, okay, I know that there's things in that six to ten year window that we're going to need to address. That's where we're leaving ourselves a gap to like be able to issue debt in the future, whether it's through debt certificates or non-referendum debt. So that's an option one, and I think the appealing up, appealing to this is like, we're able to, what I believe, attack or tackle quite a bit of work in a five year period without doing a referendum. I think that's one of the appealing parts to me. And then option two, when I gave Liz feedback, that one was for twelve million proceeds. That was really me just saying, okay, what's a bigger number? And what is the repayment structure? Like, just give me twelve million in proceeds or give me thirteen. And when I saw what came back, that immediately then defaults to, let's not do that option. I don't like, like, it takes away the flexibility. And so, but it also paints a picture of like, okay, we have these projects. Why not just issue fifteen million? Why not issue twenty million? Well, the reason is, we would be hamstringing ourselves probably out to like twenty forty if we did something like that. So it does hit at the point, like, you don't have an unlimited amount of debt capacity through this non-referendum vehicle. So that's kind of how I view both options, like option two is like, let's not do that. It doesn't, doesn't leave the flexibility. It's not what I'm interested in. Option one, that, that does provide flexibility, and I think it allows us to, particularly using the funds on hand. That's really the one big piece to all this planning, right? I mentioned, I've been thinking about this for well over a year, and I, for a long time, I thought like, there's a path to doing these classroom air conditioning projects. For a long time, I had thought that that path was going to take us to twenty-six or twenty-seven or maybe twenty-eight to get them all. But the thing that really allows us to accelerate all that is, you know, ta, tapping into these non-referendum bonds a couple of years early. So it's an option. This is something that would, we would have to do if we proceed, and the board were to vote yes on, you know, bids in December, whatever that, whatever composition that is. But we wanted the board to have that, that information.
Yeah, and I think, I think we all appreciate it, Corey. And I think we see the work that's gone into this, and it's, these amounts, I think, would, would help us get to the ultimate goals here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the R word, though. I mean, should we consider doing a referendum for these improvements? Like, is that where you're going with this, Frank?
Oh.
No?
No, I, I mean, the, the, the problem with the referendum is that we get one shot, right? If we do a referendum for this, and then we find our operating budget is in trouble, the probability of doing another referendum is really problematical.
I think what I heard you say is, we just want to be careful that we're spending and planning wisely so that we don't have to do a referendum. Or if we, if ultimately we have to, because of the way the economy shifts, we can defend the decisions of the board made leading up to that down the road.
Exactly, because the, referendums are terrible for everyone, including the taxpayer that is having too much money. You, you want to have it be as logically necessary as possible. And if somewhere in that process, we said, well, we overextended ourselves in order to do capital projects, no matter how relevant they are, and because of that, we ran out of money in our operating budget. Again, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but if that was the dialogue, that you had to go for a referendum, it might take a couple of tracks at that. It might have to take a couple of years, and that's very painful. You know, painful it is to teach in an under-air conditioning classroom. We have two or three years of restricted operating budgets because we take it out of our present debt. So I'm not saying we're going to do that. I'm just saying, it's not a, it's not the scenario that we would have had three years ago, where we're upholding our budget, nothing to disrupt us. There is some stuff going on in the economy that could lead us to that threat. I probably will be mostly, but not zero.
Yeah, and it's never zero. And I think five years ago, we couldn't have predicted what happened in the economy and in the world over the last two years. I, I think it is important that we plan responsibly, but I also think it's prudent that we plan for the improvements that are called for within the strategic plan and within what we hope for and envision for our schools. So there's a balance here, and, and I think that we can continue to work on that. And I appreciate the board's support in moving in this direction so that we can see what these costs might look like and how we can plan to ensure to the best of our ability. Again, five years ago, we once predicted what happened with the economy and with the world. So there's never a hundred percent guarantee, but I think we can be responsible and continue to be really prudent in our planning so that, so that we can tackle some of these really important improvements that we're talking about.
Great, thank you. Do you guys, do you have what you need from us?
I think for right now, do you?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I mean, I guess the plan, now that you've kind of seen kind of the financing part, how, how we might pay for at least a good part of it, and getting your, getting the board's feedback on the air conditioning. Yeah, we'll refine the plan, come with a more specific plan and show, kind of show you our, our fund balance graph and just kind of see what that'll look like. And then we'll, we'll go from there at the June meeting. So I think we have what we need.
Oh, yeah, Frank.
Not, um, not setting any kind of direction or request or anything, but that's my, I think option two, you don't have to spend any more time on it, from my personal standpoint.
Yeah.
If you were going to spend a little bit more time, the one A, one that I mentioned where we stay within ten years, it'd be nice to see more information on that, but if that takes effort, I'm not making a strong recommendation. But just to kind of give, at least my feel in terms of if you're going to spend more time on this, what might be useful.
Wait, so wait, what? Option two is the larger number? Was that the smaller number?
No, option, option two on this is the twelve million. Twelve million, and we have limited access to capital until twenty thirty-five. So I'm saying that, that option is great that we saw it, but, you know, everybody says that's not a real great option.
Oh, that was not my sense.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
All right.
Is that the sense of, of the board?
What's, I, that's what I heard Corey say. Am I wrong?
Oh, Corey, you, you don't want to pursue option two?
So it's not...
No, no, I mean, I guess, I mean, if, so I guess, I'll give you, I'll give you my rationale for why I'm not, as inclined to want to do option two, is it would, option, so like, option two would probably, the reason you would go down that path is if you get, the board gave Dr. Chris Scully and I the direction, all right, let's do these projects as fast as possible. Let's tackle them all. You said, all right, issue fifteen or, you know, a bigger number than the eleven. Like, that would be the way that you, that's probably the only way you could access that money. The downside then is, we don't have the ability to issue non-referendum debt going into the twenty thirties, probably closer to twenty forty, and which would then leave us with the debt certificates we pay from operating funds. And we know that outside of, you know, in years six to ten, there's going to be something, and then probably in the other years. So that would then leave you with just referendum and debt certificates. And, I mean, referendums are doable, but they take a very long time, right? You only, you can only get them passed at certain voting windows. That's, that's why I would not...
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was not assuming that we would not tell you to do everything, so, on the list, all the air conditioning at once. So maybe I, I shouldn't have assumed that. Okay. Just, see, I didn't, I was thinking that this board might say, do all the air conditioning at once.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that that is still something we want to consider, but maybe with option one.
I think there, well, there's a path to doing all the conditioning with, under option one, under financing option one. It just, like, junior high would have to wait probably a couple of years and then depending upon whether we do two and two, three and one, or all four, like, you know, there's, those are, those are options. Like, I'm not saying that we would have to like drag it real, out real far.
Okay.
Now, I will just say, I agree with the goal of air conditioning in one hundred percent of classrooms. And I agree with, I think, I agree with that spending money on student design work. I support that as a next step in terms of how I feel about these scenarios. I felt more comfortable with the first one. I, I think that there is a level of flexibility that we should be thinking at this point. So I am, so that I would...
Thank you, Erin. Okay. Ready to move on. Thank you so much, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, let me share my screen. Okay, all right, so the next, the next topic is lunch fees for the upcoming year. So somewhat similar to how last month and prior month, we talked about transportation fees that we, that we charge our students and their families. Same thing for, for the lunch program. So what I did is, part being newer to the district and just wanting to see what the historical information showed us, I put together a little over a decade's worth of information. So what you see here is the revenue sources and the expenditures, and then relative to the lunch prices that we charge. So the first column is a federal milk program. Get a small amount for, for milk served. That does come from the federal level. Then you have the lunch fees, which is all of our lunch and alakart stuff charged directly to the students for, for each lunch that they take, coming up with a total revenue amount. Then the next column next to it, where it says food service total expenditures, that column is the total food service expenditure cost taken from our, like, audited financials for the food service functions each year. That generates like a quote surplus or loss amount for each fiscal year. Now, I did add another column that shows a surplus and loss without lunch supervision. Lunch supervision is within the chart, the food service functional area. The reason we would pull it out is, even if we were to have a lunch set up similar to other districts, I think of where I live, where it's like done by an outside restaurant or kids bring their lunch, you would still need the lunch supervision. So that's like one way to look at it. It's like, we're going to pay for lunch supervision, whether we're providing like a meal or there's some alternative setup. So the one thing you see historically is, you know, it's in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand where the, the total expenditures have exceeded revenues. And if you look over the history of the decade plus, every few years, their lunch price for first through sixth and seventh eighth has increased. And one of the things that, that got me thinking as, thinking ahead to next year is, there's, at least in my mind, the three biggest parts of like that total expenditure is the salaries to pay the food service workers, then the benefits to go with that, and then the cost of food. And all three of those areas have, have risen, particularly the food. And we've worked with our food service vendor a few months back and looked at different items that we typically buy. Saw a typical range, and the increase in cost from a year prior was in the ten to fifteen percent range. And then we know, which you'll see in my budget presentation, that the combined, like, health insurance, which is our biggest benefit, is the, the average increase is just over nine percent. And then, you know, we're currently negotiating our contract with the support staff. So, but the, you would expect that the, the salaries for that would go up as well. So I find myself looking at it and thinking, you know, should we, you know, consider increasing the cost of, of price of a lunch for next year? If so, where are we at? And so I came up with three options, or can direct us to really any, any direction they would like. Option one is just a twenty cent increase to both, to both lunch prices, bringing the, the kindergarten through sixth grade price to three ninety-five and the seventh eighth to four thirty-five. That one is really just mirroring when you're looking back, we're typically kind of fifteen, twenty cent percent, fifteen to twenty cent increase each time we've done it in the past. Option two is a forty cent increase to both lunches. Just mathematically, that would mean that roughly ten percent increase to the price of a lunch. So you're in the ballpark of, of where costs have risen in the last year. And certainly when you, if we were to capture multiple years since our last price increase. And then I just had a third option in case the board was interested in going beyond that for a sixty cent increase to the price of lunch. So I think it's worth noting that, you know, we had a couple of years that clearly are distorted because of COVID. I mean, we've employed the same number of food service workers throughout since COVID started. Lunches have gone down, like, the end of the twenty twenty fiscal year, we had about three months where everybody was at home, so there was no lunch. But yet, staff continued to get paid. So that contributed to that variant, that higher amount of, of loss compared to other years. And then last year was truly unique, and we offered lunch, but it was not what people were accustomed to. It was quite different. The setting was quite different. So many people brought their lunch compared to normal. Plus, we had a percentage of the students that were in remote learning for the whole year. And now for this year, you know, similar, like, we've had not quite the normal setting, not quite this, the normal offerings that we might typically see at lunch. So what I've done for the, the twenty twenty-three year, that's the budgeted amounts that we have in place in the draft budget, kind of assuming a return to normal operations. I think I'm a little cautious in that I think there's probably going to be some people that, pre-COVID, were buying their lunch at school, and maybe now they aren't. But yet, the costs have still risen. So that's kind of where, where we find ourselves, and I guess what I'm looking for is, I guess, the more immediate feedback is, do we do an increase, and if so, to what? And then, similar, is there a longer term goal or, or target that they would like, we'd like to see us, as it relates to that surplus loss column without the lunch supervision included in the, in the numbers? That's really the two questions that I guess I have for this topic.
Thanks, Corey. This is really thoughtful.
Just to clarify?
Yep.
So in saying a return to normal operations, does that mean a return to, also mean a return to pre-pandemic option?
So I guess what I would say is if we're, it really goes hand in hand. If we're able to have the students back in the, like, if lunch service is going to be in the cafeteria, then what's offered would be what we did pre-COVID, right? Because like, that's, that's... Because like that's, that's what we're able to do when everybody's coming in, going through the line, getting their food. But if we're, find ourselves, and this is something we may not know until, honestly, we probably won't know until August first or roughly. Is if we have to have like a more spread out lunch scenario yet again, of course, like we're not going to be able to return to pre-COVID offerings. Um.
No, I agree. I, and I think that's just, that's also a, um, makes it a little bit harder to plan for. Because I think when you have more options, more people tend to buy, especially when they get too, well, I think high.
Yeah, yes.
Complicated a bit.
Good point.
Feel a little easier to swallow.
Right.
Little, little swallow?
Literally swallow.
Yeah, I, this is a hard one from my perspective. You know, I'm sort of on the side of, I'm really glad you've dealt with this. Thank you.
So Corey, um, looking at seventeen, eighteen, nineteen is kind of the, a baseline, ignoring some of the noise recently.
Yep.
Um, and I, and I like your column without lunch supervision because that kind of ties more directly into food costs, I guess. Um, it looks like some, in those three years, we were running, you know, a little over a hundred thousand deficit. Um, so looking at twenty twenty-three, um, the back of that book that I just did. To stay in that hundred and ten thousand dollar food cost deficit would be the option two. Would that be your assumption also?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no, I think that would, option two would, would get us the, would get us pretty close. I think the one thing I've thought about with these options is whether, whether we did nothing or option one, two, or three. Is assuming we can return to like normal lunch, like setting or lunch operations. We really don't have a baseline of like, what kind of participation levels are going to be there. And so on one hand, um, I, I, I find myself thinking that an increase is needed. Because we know, we know that the three big factors, right? Like the cost factors are going up. Um, but yet we don't know how much and what kind of participation level. Um, hence I would be, I, I've shied away from like really large increases, you know, like say a dollar per lunch or something. Um, I don't know. I, I think that would get us closer. It just, the biggest wildcard in all of this is going to be. How many students come back, particularly at the five eight level? Um, that's where, you know, a, a bigger part of our, our lunch revenue comes from, so. And, and on, I guess on one hand, I, I find myself thinking twenty twenty-three is, could be like a new baseline year, you know, so to speak.
For us, yeah. We won't hold you to it. There's anything, oh, go ahead, Erin.
This is completely anecdotal and not based on my own personal experience. I mean, I could count on one handy, many times my kids packed a lunch and it was because they had a field trip. So we were always buying lunches and a sixty percent increase would not have swayed me in the slightest. I think you either are kind of a family that buys lunch or you're not. So if you think an increase is warranted, so we're not running this loss.
Not a sixty percent, a sixty cent.
Sixty cents. I meant that. That's what I meant. Yeah, sorry. No, I, I meant sixty cents, not sixty percent. Right.
Nice.
Yeah. And what was that like? Three bucks a week?
Yeah, three bucks a week, yeah.
Three bucks a week?
Good calculation.
Do you want to say something, Ann?
I, I was just going to say, it, it certainly seems based on the increase in cost of, you know, salaries and benefits, nine, cost of food, ten to fifteen. It certainly seems like option two, um, is in mind this year, or?
Yeah, should we do a sense of, of the board on this? Would that be helpful to you?
Yeah, yeah, because what, the next step would be whatever kind of direction and feedback I get from the board. Then I would, I'd prepare it for approval, um, next week.
Go ahead, Amy. Did you?
So I'm between a two and a three. Definitely feel like, I, to me as a parent, if I weren't on the board, an increase was very reasonable and appropriate. Uh, almost expected, just given surrounding. Um, before hearing you's talk, I was pretty solidly in option two. I think about it similarly to the transportation conversation we had. But, um, after talking to you and also I, I think three is reasonable. So I'm, I could be swayed between option two and option three.
I think, um, with the bus, there was clearly a supply and demand elasticity issue. That if the price got too high, people would say, I'm not, I'm not good. Um, to Erin's point, I mean, if it got to sixty percent more, as opposed to six cents more. There's, there would be people that said, okay, you're going to have tuna fish sandwiches, whether you like them or not. But, um, it's less elastic than the bus thing. Um, so I was leaning toward forty as a minimum, but I'm comfortable with sixty cents.
That's helpful. I, I, I agree with you, Amy and Frank. I think more, more makes more sense at this point. It's not that much more, plus you said tuna fish sandwich. I mean, it's arguable whether or not you could do that, you know, from home. Whether it would be this cost, so.
I think the places that do the outside providers, like it, you know, it's corner bakery one day and it's whatever, it's, they're.
Oh, it's substantially more.
Substantially more than this.
That's where, uh, my son's in kindergarten and that's what we're experiencing. And we took, we talk about that a lot. It is not anywhere, it's not in the ballpark of these.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a great program. Let's try to keep it as financially viable as we can.
That, I think that is the point, is we do have to keep it financially viable. Um, and I know the board has had a long commitment of it being self-sustaining. Um, it hasn't been over the last couple of years for a number of reasons. And so this does move us toward that again. And I think that, again, our core mission is education. So this is a service that we provide to support that access and, and convenience, right?
Just for completeness, there, I mean, there's obviously children that, small percentage luckily in our community where their, their lunches are paid for.
Sure.
Um, there's also some angel fund or something. I mean, there's that, I've always worried about that category that you're not, you're not. Low enough on resources that you, that you get help, but you're low enough on resources that it's painful.
There are, that we, there are some who are eligible for a free lunch. And then there are some who are eligible for partial payments on a lunch, so. Um, and we do take special circumstances into account. Sometimes that, that does need to be considered because a family falls on hard time. We, um, have had generous support through the angel fund as well, for a, a variety of things that families occasionally need, so.
Yeah, that was a question.
Yes. And again, there's always the option to bring a lunch from home as well, um, for those who may prefer that. Speaking of, tends to do that option. So there's, yeah, there's a, there's some options out there.
So it sounds like then that the collective direction is toward option three, which would be a sixty cent increase.
Yep.
We'll prepare that and bring that back for board approval then next, next week.
All right. Are you ready to move on to the thing you really want to talk about?
Yeah. Not my, uh, presentation.
I'm just gonna, as Corey's pulling that up, I'm gonna just make a quick note of time. It's five to eleven. And I know we have a couple of other, um, important topics to touch on, as well as executive session. And we try to conclude by noon, so just a acknowledgement of our, our schedule.
That's, aside, um, since I was the one that specifically asked for it, it's, for time, we needed to move that to the next meeting. I'm, I'm okay with that, so.
Or, or maybe just keep it brief and if there's further discussion, we can circle back at the next meeting if that's, if that makes sense as well. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, so budget. All right, so we've been working on, uh, drafting a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. We have a first look at it today, um, that incorporates many things that we know and some that we're just estimating. All right, so timeline. Um, we're looking at a draft today. And then, uh, next week at the, at the board meeting, we'll come back with our tentative budget at the June sixth meeting. Um, and then in the June thirteenth board of ed, we would ask that the board, following historical practice. Approve the tentative budget and then set the public hearing to be held at our August board meeting, which is the twenty-second of August. And then that budget is on display. It's on our, it would be on our website, but it's also available if somebody wanted to view it in person. Um, and then in August, we would review any changes that occurred over the summer. As always, there's usually several changes. We would detail any, any changes out for the board between June and August. Board would vote at the September or August twenty-second meeting to, to approve the budget. And then on the administration side, we would file that with the appropriate state agencies like YSB, um, by the end of September. So operating funds revenue by source, um, not a surprise. District thirty-nine relies heavily on local resources, so eighty-two percent. Uh, for property taxes, then another ten percent in local revenue, which is fees like, you know, bus fees and lunch fees and instructional material fees. Local revenue, property taxes, I just said eighty-two percent of our operating fund revenue. So in the budget, we have a one point four percent increase for the twenty-one levy. Um, we have our ten-year average of new growth, which has a value of just over four hundred thousand. One thing that has, uh, come to us recently, Senate Bill five oh eight, the property fund, uh, recapture bill. The first estimate we got from Cook County said our amount was seven hundred seventy-one thousand. We got a letter, it was, I think maybe spring break week or just after. And they said, they sent it to all the Cook County, um, local governments that were eligible for this, for this legislation. Said, oh, there was a mistake, sorry. Um, your amount is now five hundred seventeen thousand. So that's the amount that we will have is, is five hundred thousand. So, um, that's, that's been incorporated into the budget. Um, we set our net collection rate for this budget at ninety-eight percent, which is how we've done it the last, last few years. Um, quarter percent equals about a hundred fifty thousand in, um, revenue. And then interest revenue. The overall interest revenue amount is a little bit less than, um, what we've had this year. Um, two things are contributing to kind of my estimate for next year. One, rates have been rising, which is great, and we're expecting them to continue to rise. So that's fine on the interest revenues, on the revenue side. But one thing that's going to really hold us back is this infighting at the Cook County level between. Uh, the assessors office sending out the bills, the treasurer's office and the board review. We're being told instead of starting to see money come in from that installment of property taxes in like late July, December, January. So that's, since property tax is such a huge part, the one downside for us is that's six, five, six months of lost interest earnings, right? And at a rate where, in an environment where interest rates are rising, um, you know, that can be painful. And when I kind of mapped out or just kind of did a quick calculation a few days ago of what that might be. Fairly confident that whatever their interest rates are in the latter half of this calendar year, it's probably going to cost us north of a hundred thousand. Um, just because they, they couldn't get the bills out on time. Uh, the replacement taxes, that's a significant line item for us. Um, of note, the current year amount reflections have been very strong. Um, then keep tuition. We have the budget at one point five six million. And I've included the enrollments by school. I think the one nice thing that I take away from this slide is that. We have like a, what I consider a large percentage of kindergarten enrollees electing for that, for that option program. We saw that this past year. Um, it continues to lend, lend, uh, lend some support to the district's decision to, to go down this path. Um, so I, nice to see people taking advantage of that. Lunch fees, we just, we just talked about that. Um. The, the budget has one point two million. Um, and then just for reference, like kind of the high watermark for pre-COVID years was about one point three on the revenue side. Transportation fees, um, I've set the budget at six hundred twenty-eight thousand. This, this current year, we're looking at about five hundred twenty-one thousand a, as being the actual amount. And then this thing, the budget amount includes the fee increase that the board had approved. From an operational standpoint, we've only had one student per bench on, on each bus, so about a capacity of forty-eight. Um, I think it's somewhat realistic that that may go away. But it is worth noting that even if that restriction were to go away for next year. Um, the potential to add it is really only to add a few students on each route. We have a certain number of routes where capacity is typically less than, less than the bus capacity. And then, you know, we're not that far off, so it's not like we would, you know, double ridership or go up by fifty percent or anything like that. Uh, but there is a, there's a possibility to add, add a few riders. State and federal aid incorporated into this budget. Um, held that flat pending some final amounts that we typically will get over the summer before the new school year starts. So we'll update that for August. Um, kind of a temporary federal level grants, the S R rounds two and three of the stimulus. For right now, I've got a hundred seventy-five thousand in the budget for revenue and expenditures for S R two, two thirty-five for S R three. Um, as we finalize, finalize how much money actually gets spent during this current year, we'll update those over the summer. Um, you know, for, for the actual amounts for, for next year. Now switching sides to operating expenditures by object, similar to revenues, it's not surprising that we're in that seventy-five to eighty percent range. Our total expenditures being salaries and benefits. We're just a, we're a, we're a people organization. Salaries and staffing. Um, so when we budget for this, one nice thing about having multi-year contracts or kind of having a process. That allows us to budget and have some certainty. Um, within this draft budget, we know the amounts and we were able to budget the amounts for three of the four groups. So the one group that's left is support staff, which we're negotiating. So hopefully we'll have something done before and able to update it for the, uh, for the August, August meetings. And then one other component to that is like, you know, how do we staff in relation to enroll, enrollment? And we've continued to staff within, staff our class sizes within our, our, our board targets for, for class size by certain, by different grade lines. Medical and dental insurance, so, um, the renewal, not quite as low as what we'd like to see. But, um, that happens from time to time. HMO had a six point seven percent renewal and PPO and the high deductible had eleven point five percent. I think it's worth noting, um, district thirty-nine is now, has completed their reserve share payments, um, into the COOP ninety. So we're a full member and we don't have any of that in the budget, which, which is nice. Those were a couple hundred thousand dollars each year. On the dental insurance side, the HMO stayed flat while the PPO went up two and a half percent. We do have one last reserve share payment, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. IMRF rate, um, this is one thing that changes every year based upon an actual report. And it looks at district thirty-nine specific, um, specific experience and investment in activity. So the preliminary rate we got for calendar year twenty-three is five point one nine percent. The rate we have for the current calendar year is six point five nine. One of the things that we do for budgeting, because IMRF looks at calendar year, we're on a fiscal year. Is we are able to see some nice savings where we're going to go from. A blended budget rate of seven four five down to five eight nine. Um, so a one percent change, up or down, equates to about eighty thousand dollars in savings or more in expenditures. Um, I will say from, in my career, uh, I've typically seen, um, local municipalities. Whether it's municipalities, school districts, park districts, in that low double digit for their IMRF rate. And then like in, when times are good, like maybe dropping below ten. So the fact that we got ours and it was all barely over five percent, um, is, is quite remarkable. Uh, something I never thought I would see.
Corey, I'm.
Go ahead.
I spaced out here for a second. But IMRF, I should know what that is, but I just can't remember off the top of my.
Uh, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
Ah, thank you.
So for us, if you're a certified staff, so if you're a teacher or administrator, you're going into the teacher's retirement system. Anybody who's not. Anybody who's not eligible for that gets pushed into IMRF if they work 600 hours in a year. Alright.
So that, that percentage is our contribution?
Yeah, that's, that's the employer contribution. Employees pay 4.5%. That stays flat regardless. Then and, and the thing about IMRF, which is unique, is that every employer, whether it's us or the Willman Park District or the Village of Willman, we all have specific rates that are actually calculated based upon our experience, how long people stay, do they retire, how long they live, all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of factors that go into that particular rate. Purchase service and supplies. So we've typically will increase like school-based allocations, department budgets by a, by a CPI amount or something very, very close to that. But those amounts usually are smaller, usually the bigger drivers in these two areas that are more dependent upon like the actual service and contracts that we're, that we're needing to, to get each year. And we set the budgets to be realistic of what we actually need. So areas like insurance with liability and workers' comp, which have recently been higher than inflation. Technology, we, we're looking at the replacement cycles. I think we're at a point where going forward, like technology should be fairly flat, but there will still be like minor change, what I consider somewhat minor changes. And then in curriculum, like we tend to have a little bit more uneven replacement cycle. So for those areas, we work with each of those department heads or administrators to formulate budgets for the upcoming year. And then as I mentioned, with food service, we're seeing increasing costs. I'm anticipating that use in the food service program might be a little bit less with rising rates. So we've kind of set that expenditure budget to our historical amounts. COVID and special education budget items, some worth, worth noting. Last couple of years, we've had kind of some significant placeholders for COVID. I think as we look ahead to next year, we're moving away from that. And so I've stripped out a lot of those COVID-specific placeholders leading into next year. However, I did keep a, just a small amount of in, in reserve, just, you know, in case for supplies and materials and potentially some equipment replacement or any purchase services that might come along that you just never know. I felt like I wanted to have something in the budget, but I see like the trends and where we're heading into next year. So it's nice to be able to pull a, a significant amount of money out of, out of the fiscal year 23 budget. And then one thing that I think is, is noteworthy, is related to special education, is the kind of the non-District 39 placements, they're, one of, we have many line items, but one of the line items went up by nearly a million, million dollars for fiscal year 23. While that is, is a lot of money, we're hopeful that we should see a majority of that, that cost reimbursed back to District 39 by the state. So it shouldn't be, you know, it's not just a $1 million increase or, or net, you know, net deficit related to this. You know, hopefully it'll just be maybe a few hundred thousand.
Capital. Go ahead. And I want to just understand it a little bit better. Some of that I assume is costs went up, some of it might be numbers, students that fall in this category.
Talk a little bit about the
Uh, your microphone, please.
We have talked, it was too much. We've talked a little bit about specific placements that we make based on students' needs that were, because of the, the student needs significant.
Do we see a trend there or is this a one-time or is this a new baseline or?
There should not be a new baseline.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, capital projects. So because this was a draft budget and we're going to have a couple more iterations. And I didn't know the, how our conversation was going to go earlier this morning. What I included in, at least in this version of it, is the three projects we know about. And then I had included one project for, for summer of 23, the budget of 7.8. Obviously it will change as we, as we work through it and for the next, next meeting. Debt service and transfers. Our debt service fund has a budget of about 2.5 million. This includes the repayment of our, our non-referendum 2020 Geo Bonds. And then it also includes the repayment of our debt certificates that we transfer money. So then we transfer money each year. In the upcoming year, it'll be just under a million dollars from Operation Made In's funded debt service. And then we also have a transfer from O and M to capital projects to help cover those construction costs. I suppose it's possible now that we've had our conversation about what kind of projects we were looking at for summer of 23, it's, it's a little bit possible that we may have to do a transfer from that to O and M. It's just an extra procedural step, but we'll work through that in the next couple of weeks and whether that's actually needed. So the operating summary, operating fund summary that leaves us with a budget of 69.8 million, expenditures at 68. So that gives us a, for right now, a projected surplus of 1.7 million in the operating funds. We're transferring 3.2 million of that out. And then for right now, that leaves us with a fund balance of 28.2 million or just over 41% of our operating expenditures. This graph shows revenues versus expenditures for fiscal year 23. It has three years of actual and then the budget for fiscal year 22. The nice part is revenues exceed expenditures each year. Should, will continue to be our goal. Nope, that's not, that shouldn't be in there. Let me switch documents for a second. Then. Alright. So this document shows and is included in the board packet, there's 17 pages with the draft budget. This is our operating fund summary. So the thing I'd always gravitate towards, at least on this document, is what is our surplus deficit line item? Kind of in the middle of the page, we're at 1.7 million dollars in our draft budget. We're transferring some money out for, for projects and then to pay some debt service. And then I just always gravitate towards that bottom line of what's our, what's our fund balance percentage. Right now, we're looking at 41.47%. For fiscal year 23, here's the operating funds on the revenue side. See it more broken down. You have different line items for property taxes and then a state and then a federal line. You also see the same graph that we showed in the other presentation. The percentage of revenue by, by source. One more page. Operating expenditures, which you'll see here, just broken out by what I consider object area, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials, capital outlay. Just one way that we, one way that we look at it. You see that the current budget's a 68 million. You can see some nice year-over-year comparisons in there, just for reference. So that's really where we're at right now in the process. Within this particular document that was included in the, in the board packet, there's pages for each fund, if, if anyone, just in case I won't go through each one. But I'm happy to any, answer any questions that there might be about the, the draft budget. Like I said, leading into June, we'll probably have a couple revisions now that we got some direction on the facilities part and kind of planning for that. And of course, we always have a bunch of changes between June and August.
Does anybody have, Frank?
So Corey, a lot of this, there's not really comparables or, or should there be? But on capital expenditures, do you have any feel for like comparables in terms of what percentage of, of budget is capital in other districts or comparable districts?
That is not something that we have looked at. I think the one thing that I've, I've seen, I know personally, personally and in, when I was on the public accounting side and seeing how districts handled like their capital, is like the approach varies widely. Some districts tend to have a little bit of a, like an operating surplus that they then contribute. Instead of just building a fund balance, they immediately funnel that back in. Some districts have, almost every year, their budget is like flat, they, or there's like zero surplus or zero deficit. Like they just, they don't have the capacity and some people are operating in a, in a deficit. So some people, some districts, when it comes to like their, their capital expenditures, it, it's really just like, they only ever get to do anything when they issue bonds. So like, they have any non-referendum debt that they can access or if they go off the referendum. You know, we're, we're, I think, not totally unique, but certainly not the norm where we have, we have, we have the ability to access funds from a few different places to then contribute to capital projects. I know it doesn't really answer your question, but I don't know that there's, it's not something that's readily talked about amongst school districts just because things are so, tend to be different in approaches.
Yeah, it's a question.
It just, it just goes to, we're running around in this budget, it's like 3.5, 4% I think. Obviously zero is bad. If, if you're looking at like a five or 10-year, I would assume, you know, above 5% might be bad too. But, so it's just a way of getting a feel. If our 3.5% is kind of responsible number, or is it on the high end of responsible or on the low end of responsible? I mean, it could give us a little bit of a feel for of where we are. And obviously we want to spend some money to maintain our schools, so it's appropriate that we spend some. It might give us a better understanding of what the, where we are in that spectrum.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's just, it sounds like it's really hard to compare, you know, us to other districts, but maybe just comparing us to ourselves and our history might give us some insight and be more manageable.
To other districts because the strategy is different.
Yeah, right.
Depending on the facility needs and kind of the growth and decline and all of that comes into play, so.
Yeah.
But
Yeah, it does occur to me that it, you look at 3.5% and it's like, is that low or is that high? Or, you know, I mean, again, it's, it's in the range of not so low that it's bad and not so high that it's bad, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question.
Frank, certainly roll that kind of data. I guess I, my question would be like this.
I'm not curious for that much. I would, if there was kind of a, an average or maybe, maybe our auditors or someone could answer that off the top of their head. But if not, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds to me like, Frank, I, I've thought about the question you're asking. And then you start getting into each school district and how they run it, you know, in order to figure it out.
There's so much that's different that way.
Yeah. Maybe we start with an analysis of what we've been doing in the past.
I, I don't know, are we?
I, I wasn't asking for a lot of work. I was just, if there was, if there was a number out there or, or like I said, if some consulting firm that sees hundreds of things have a gut feel for, for it. I, I assume from other things that the amount we spend is, everybody comes back, uh, it seems reasonable. But if there was any more information, that would be nice. If not, don't spend a lot of time on that one.
John, is that the conclusion?
That is all. Thank you. Thank you, Corey, so much.
Sure, I can, we're moving into strategy next. Lisa isn't here, so I can kind of facilitate this. The first was Science Olympiad and really it's to the board. We provided thanks to Katie Lee and her intensive research on this topic. There's a lot of information that's provided to the board in the summary report. We can go through that now quickly or we can just delay till next meeting.
I mean, I would like to discuss it, so if, if it's going to be quick and not have time for discussion, then I prefer we move it out.
Okay, we'll do that then. And the district strategic advisory team update. Aaron or Frank, if you'd like to give the board a quick update on where we're at. And then I'll just mention that we plan to finalize all of the KPIs and the presentation materials and bring it back to the board for in-depth review on Monday night. Aaron or Frank?
Not a lot to say. We had a meeting of the entire DESAT on Thursday, May 12th. And we've been, you know, getting feedback from the whole group and then we go back to our individual subcommittees and incorporate that and get ideas. And I, I think the, the reason our meeting on Thursday was so short is because our gold champions truly are champions. And they've been working extraordinarily hard and that I would encourage everyone to look at the documents that were included in Board Docs and forward to the presentation on Monday. I don't really have much else to say. We're, we're in good shape.
Yeah, I think the update from the last meeting, we have the summary meeting this, this week and the presentation we'll see at the next meeting.
Then I think that concludes the stra- Strategy Committee items and we'll move on to public comments.
Yes. I do not see anyone here for public comments. So I will, that turns us to the action item. I seek a motion to approve the resolution for the roof replacement at Central Elementary.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the award of emergency roofing work at Central Elementary School.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John, is he's ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Benzika?
Yes.
Karen Stone?
Yes.
Amy Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there any old business? Any new business?
Hey. In the, in the honor of Erin, who likes to recognize students so much for some really fun things to see. I had the pleasure of visiting or attending the High Press Middle School Variety Show Talent Show on Friday. Oh my goodness, it was adorable.
Two plus hours.
It, it was long and I was amazed at these fifth and sixth graders, right? I mean, they're just these little young people who have just experienced and lived through two years of COVID. And so one might think and expect that their stage presence and competence at presenting in front of their peers and their parents and their loved ones would be maybe a little more limited than we might have otherwise seen in fifth and sixth graders. And I was so impressed, these kids' ability to get up on stage and do everything from martial arts to magic to singing to writing their own poems. I mean, it was
Tap dancing?
Tap dancing, Rubik's cubes, cube solutions. I mean, it was, it was incredible. And each and every one of them, you could see their little, their personalities and their confidence and their, just their passion come out through this presentation. It was, I was really, really pleased. I had the chance to go and witness these, these young people showing their stuff. It was really, really cool. So if you missed it, I hope that there's a, a recording of it somewhere because it was truly impressive. And then you think, these are fifth and sixth graders, it's amazing. So.
So brave.
It was so brave. And the kids supporting one another was the other thing that just, there were moments. I, it definitely brought me to tears to see kids cheering on one another.
It sounds like it hasn't changed from the 2015 show that I sat through. And I'm glad to hear it. I, I recall someone doing an a cappella version of Iko Iko. You know, that's all, uh, beatboxing to the Ghostbusters theme. It's all coming back. But yes, it was the supportiveness that was overwhelming.
Yes, that's exactly it.
These are middle school kids, right? It's awesome.
Yeah, it was really, really neat.
They know how brave it is in front of peers to get up there. Also just kudos to the parents who put in tons of hours to make it happen.
It was really, really neat, so there you go.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss special ed, student discipline negotiations and specific employees.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John, is he's ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Benzika?
Yes.
Karen Stone?
Yes.
Amy Payne?
Yes. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session and the time is 11:23.